Good evening, Chair. Calls to order: Public hearing for Bill 23-004, Police Accountability Board Amendments. Counsel, as you know, since last year, we were mandated to bring forth a police accountability board in the county. And since then, the standards board has changed some of their rules and guidelines. And this amendment is to comply with that as far as the governing body. I do know that the county executive has petitioned the Attorney General's office and maybe get a response back from there, but for right now, this brings us up to comply. So with that, Mr. Kearney, did I miss anything?
No, no, nothing at all. It just changes who does the appointment, who selects the chair, and things like that. Before, the current law in the county says that it's the county executive. This will change those functions to be the responsibility of the county council, unless it gets changed yet again.
Thank you. Mr. Pembott?
Yeah, I know many may know, but the Police Accountability Act replaced the law enforcement's bill of rights, the LAOBR, in 2021, which was a proven reliable standard for decades. The misconception is that the LAOBR protected police officers when they're involved in criminal activity, which is not true. It only provided a procedural process for administrative-related charges or incidents. I know County Executive Casely fought hard to prevent that as a legislator in Annapolis. Thank you, sir. But in the end, this is the version that was left for us, a process that is confusing and has more questions than answers. With that said, the Maryland State Legislature enacted that police accountability board should be established by the local governing body, which in Harford County would be the Harford County Council. So this legislation is merely following the guidelines set forth by the Annotated Code of Maryland. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Pembott. Anyone else have anything to say? Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
Mr. President, we did not have anybody signed up.
All right. Well, this will conclude this public hearing for Bill 23-004. It's now closed. We'll take it up at a later date. Sir, could you please find a seat? We're not going to allow anyone to stand tonight. There's one up here in the second row. Bill 23-005, moratorium warehouse. Counsel, it's our pleasure to have the county executive here with us this evening, Mr. Casely, Mr. Blumquist, Mr. Grimm. There will be no applause. Before we get started, let me make a couple of ground rules here. There will be no applause, no outburst. If you guys break those rules with one warning, I'm going to empty the room. You'll all be standing outside to come back in to speak. We've got a lot of speakers here tonight. We're over 52 or 54 speakers. I'm about ready to cut the time from three minutes to two. I'm trying to make that decision now as we sit here. So please bear with us and be respectful of each other, as I always tell you. Mr. Casely?
Good evening, Council President and council members. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak here today on Bill 23005. By this bill, I'm asking this council to support a six-month moratorium on the approval of new warehouse construction in order to allow sufficient time for the introduction, consideration, and the approval of new legislation that would define and appropriately regulate mega warehouse distribution centers in our county. Warehousing became a use category classification when the 1982 zoning code was adopted, warehousing permitted as of right in the village business, the business three, commercial industrial, general industrial, and light industrial districts. The term warehousing was not defined in the 1982 zoning code or subsequently, but we can logically assume that the council members in 1982 assumed or understood that term to describe the warehouses that then existed throughout Harford County. Those 1982 warehouse structures were comparatively minuscule compared to today's mega warehouse distribution centers. These centers are creatures of a global economy that supports a shift from American-based manufacturing to foreign-based manufacturing and the rise of the e-commerce. Mega warehouse distribution centers facilitate a global supply chain that shifts vast quantities of foreign-made products to the U.S. for distribution through these regional mega distribution facilities. The economies of scale provided that are enabled by these mega facilities make it virtually impossible for U.S. manufacturers to compete with foreign products made without the constraints of U.S. environmental and labor regulations. This trend proceeds without concern, unfortunately, for the impacts these structures have on local communities throughout the U.S. To be sure, this body did not in 1982 have any concept of the mega warehouse mass distribution centers that we now see in 2023. To get an idea of just the incredible scale of size of these mega facilities that are now under consideration in Harford County, consider just a few of them. On Perry Min Peninsula, there's a proposal for five warehouses totaling 5.2 million square feet. We're just talking the square feet in this, not the cubic feet, which is actually 300 and over 300 million. For comparison, this square footage for the footprint would be a combination of the following structures, adding these all together: Oriole Park, the Baltimore Arena, the Baltimore Convention Center, the Hartford Mall, Upper Chesapeake Medical Facility, and Ripken Stadium. All those together makes that one facility. Abingdon Business Park, four warehouses totaling over 2 million square feet. For comparison, that footprint is larger than a Rundle Mills Mall, the largest mall in the state of Maryland, which is just 1.9 million square feet. The Aberdeen, there's another complex in Aberdeen, which proposes three warehouses totaling 729,500 square feet. That footprint is about the same size as the combined footprint of both the U.S. Library and the Capitol and the, I'm sorry, the U.S. Congress, the U.S. Capitol, and the Library of Commerce. I'm talking just square footage. This doesn't account for the fact that these structures are typically 60 feet tall. The construction of these mega structures will transform our landscape, our traffic, our economy, our labor force, and our roadways. Despite these outlandish sizes, the development of these mega structures currently received no special consideration of the zoning code. Without changes necessary to the code, these transformative projects will proceed under a contrived interpretation of use classification for simple warehouses. And those simple warehouses have as much in common with the development of these mega structures as with other uses that did not exist when the zoning code was adopted in 1982. Uses like electric car manufacturing and sales, solar farms, cell towers, wind farms, cell phone assembly facilities, chip manufacturing, mega data centers, casinos, marijuana farms, marijuana distribution facilities, and more. Yes, warehouse is in the word, the mega warehouse distribution facilities, but that's a slim read on which to transform our economy, our county. Clearly, the zoning code has struggled to keep pace with the astounding developments in technology that have marked the past 20 years. The response by this county should not be to force these new revolutionary uses into existing classifications. Rather, the proper response is for us to revise the zoning code to address the unique challenges and opportunities presented by each of these new markets. We need to make sure that these new uses don't negatively impact the property rights of other surrounding landowners. They don't result in the excessive degradation of the quality of life in the impacted communities. They don't place undue stress on the fragile ecosystems that directly impacted the health of the Chesapeake Bay. They don't ultimately leave our community with the blight of abandoned mega structures when the trade winds once again change and leave these buildings with no practical uses in the local economy. That they don't saddle our county with excessive costs for remediation of stream and shore erosion, especially when the state and federal laws increase the standards and cost for stream remediation that we have to bear. That they don't adversely impact neighboring property rights with 60-foot-high metallic walls. They don't overtax our highways with an increase in truck traffics of 18-wheelers, container trucks, and an array of smaller vehicles and vans distributing directly to retail consumers. That they don't overtax our public transportation system due to these projects' reliance on influx of low-paying workers from neighboring counties. They don't crowd out other potentially more economically advantageous uses of the land. They don't overly tax our volunteer fire resource, and that they fairly and fully compensate the county for improvements in roads necessary to offset the unique traffic of 24/7/365 patterns necessary to support some of these facilities. This bill is intended to allow an opportunity for my administration to bring before this council for your consideration legislation that I firmly believe is important to the long-term interest of the county that we all love. Problems related to the inappropriate placement of mega warehouse distribution facilities would burden our county for generations to come. I'm simply asking this council for a moratorium for up to six months to try to get this right. Let's work together for the citizens of Harford County. I brought with me both my county attorney, Mr. Blumquist, and my planning and zoning director as well to answer your questions. Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Casely. Mr. Grimm, do you have anything to add? Mr. Blumquist?
I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Then if I may, I'd like to start. When I read your proposed legislation, six or seven times, you speak about large warehouses. What defines a large warehouse to you in square feet?
That's part of the problem. In other words, this use has existed from 1982, and nothing's defined in the zoning code. So you can have, and as a matter of fact, distribution center was added in 2021, which just adds a whole new layer of traffic because as a distribution center now, you're not just dealing with tractor trailers and container trailers, you're dealing with all the vans, from small vans up to, you know, medium-sized vans and trucks that are moving freight. So you've added a whole new layer of traffic.
But in all fairness, are we talking 50,000, 100,000, 200,000 square feet? You must have some idea what a large warehouse is because you've mentioned it so many times in there. And I'm just trying to ascertain what you're talking about, what your thought is.
And I think a better way to look at it is warehousing an accessory use to a principal use because then it's not at all affected by this moratorium versus is warehousing the principal use. In other words, we've identified is we have a permitted use chart. It really should be reconsidered, and it should be amended. So you have to take everything that falls within that permitted use, you have to examine it, and you have to answer just the question you're asking, and that's the whole purpose of a moratorium. The purpose of a moratorium is to stop anyone from obtaining vested rights in the existing zoning. That's the express purpose of a moratorium. It puts a hold on everything while we have public discussion about those issues and while we collectively make a determination as to what constitutes a large warehouse or not that works for the consensus. And obviously, everyone has a different perspective as to what constitutes a large warehouse. We're going to have to come to that determination. And so the purpose of the moratorium is to say, timeout, let's slow down, let's have that discussion, let's hear from the industry, let's hear from the citizens, and let us do what then makes sense. So that's really what we're asking.
So it's hard to determine how much acreage we're talking about for a project because we have stormwater management to figure into, we have parking areas, we have setbacks, we have other pieces to the puzzle, but we can't have any background on what we're looking at in this bill because we don't even know what size of building we're starting with. So therefore, if Atlantic Tractor wanted to build in addition to their business, they couldn't do it because we don't know what size building we're trying to?
Well, what's the principal use of Atlantic Tractor? The principal use of Atlantic Tractor?
Would be to distribute parts, would be to assemble equipment that comes in, would be to sell?
So the warehousing is an accessory use, it's not a principal use. And so you have to judge all these things on a case-by-case basis, but it sounds like what you're describing to me would not be impacted at all by this moratorium because that would be an accessory use. And accessory use comes under a different part of the code, not the permitted use chart.
Then maybe a amendment to this bill that would speak to that would make some other people more comfortable to start with. When I look at your village business piece on there, is there a parcel large enough in the village business-zoned areas to house a large warehouse on when we don't know how big a large warehouse is?
In the village business district, typically, you wouldn't see a project like this because in the villages, they wouldn't be served by public water and sewer. And so you wouldn't be able to have a necessary water to be able to supply fire suppression and things like that. So typically, you wouldn't see that in the DB. However, it is listed as a permitted use in the DB.
Self-storage facilities?
Self-storage facilities are listed separately as mini warehousing in the code. They have their own separate line item in definition.
Okay. And then, like I said before, if Clorox, Atlantic Tractor, or someone else were looking to expand, you say that doesn't fit.
That's right, because that's an accessory use to the principal use of the property, and that's governed by a different classification or regulation in the zoning code.
You spoke about vesting. How many projects do we have ongoing in the county now that we would interrupt? Is it just warehouses? Is it any project in the county that's being worked on today?
It's any project where the principal use, the use for which a certificate of zoning has been sought but not yet obtained is warehousing, wholesaling, processing, distribution, and local delivery, because that's the permitted use category that we're trying to examine. I mean, I think most people are well acquainted, and I'm well acquainted with two projects that would be impacted or potentially impacted. And I prefer not to talk about specific projects because there's different ways to look at it, there's different arguments to make, and I'm not looking to discuss with that specificity. But certainly, it could impact, you have me in the business center, it would impact the Mitchell property. And I'm not aware of any others at this point in time, but I'll defer to Shane, he's a little bit more up to speed with that than I am.
I'm familiar with two other projects. One is at Technology Drive and the Heat Center. And then the other is at the Clayton Station Business Center. I apologize, I don't have the exact address, but there is a project potentially in Clayton
And you discussed that you're working on legislation to bring forward to us?
Yes, that's right. To bring it forward for public discussion, hopefully, before we bring it forward, so we can hear from the industry as well as from citizens. And obviously, you're welcome to participate in that process at any point.
That's all I have for right now. Mr. Pembott?
Thank you, Mr. President. County Executive Casely, Mr. Blumquist, Mr. Grimm, thank you all for your presentation and your service to the county. I appreciate the opportunity to discuss openly this moratorium legislation. Having reviewed the proposed Bill 23-005, I have serious concerns that the bill is unconstitutional and will have a negative impact on Harford County as a whole. I'd like to briefly go through a few areas of the bill that I have questions about. The first one, the bill is classified as an emergency act, which is actually the first three words of a legislation. Now, if you define emergency, you will see that it's described as an unexpected or unforeseen circumstance that calls for immediate action. I guess my first question is what makes this legislation an emergency?
Yeah. I mean, the emergency in this case is, as it's used in the code. In the code, you have two different categories of legislation, and the county code uses the term emergency in order to allow us to move things through faster. And it would be best to move this through expeditiously so that we don't tie these, I mean, we are impacting people's livelihoods. We don't want to do that for any longer than we have to. So what we'd like to do is get this in and be done with it and get it out. The longer it drags on, the more of an inconvenience this becomes to everybody. So that's, you know, when we use emergency, it's because that's the vehicle that you all provide, the legislation that allows us to move this through fastest.
And to a degree, emergency is a question of perspective. If you're living next door to one of these things and you're impacted by one of these things, you think the transportation element hasn't been affected, you'd say it's an emergency. If you're, you know, a business that wants to move forward with one of these things, you'd say it's not an emergency. So it's a, I think the whole point is it's a relative term. We put it over as either/or because if it's emergency, it'll take effect faster, we'll be able to move faster, and it'll stop vesting faster. Otherwise, vesting doesn't stop until it pays back.
Thank you. But there has been warehousing in Harford County for decades, and during that time, the county has reviewed and evaluated the master plan and the comprehensive rezoning routinely, as recent as 2016. So was there any emergencies identified during those evaluations at all?
So I think we'd have to look at this as, A, we just came into office, that's the first point, and B, what we're seeing now is the volume of these mega warehouse distribution centers that are being proposed, not only in our county but through up and down the East Coast. So, you know, I can't speak to past councils. This is virtually entirely a new county council and a new executive branch over here. So I really can't speak for what went on in the last council or the last executive.
But there are systems in place, such as traffic environment and building size studies, development advisory boards, that would identify any emergencies. And if there was any emergencies that were foreseen, I would think that during the first three months of your administration, that perhaps a study could have been implemented then rather than waiting till now to act on an emergency, to have a study done.
Yeah. Well, I mean, the previous council did pass emergency legislation. But again, the nomenclature emergency, basically, as I read it in the code, is intended to say that this council should expedite things. I mean, most things go through the council in the ordinary course, and everything can't be expedited. And all the emergency designation does is allow for this council to address things more rapidly, allow them to go into place more rapidly. So, you know, you addressed plenty of emergency legislation, both in this body as well as in the General Assembly, because they use the exact same terminology. And I would dare to say to you that I don't think I ever saw an emergency bill passed General Assembly that I personally thought was an emergency. In fact, most of them I thought were a detriment to the welfare of the country by passing them. So it's really just simply a nomenclature to say, when does this thing start? Let's move this thing along, we'll take it faster than other stuff.
And if I may, if it were an emergency and we passed it that way, the minute he signs it, it becomes law as opposed to a 60-day wait.
Right. But I guess my point is, and then I'll close it out, COVID, the precautions, was an emergency. This is something that, you know, we've revisited many, many times to where the urgency, I just didn't think was there. I'll move on. The proposed bill creates a six-month moratorium, as we discussed, for any approvals or permits for warehousing. It's my understanding that the real estate and development groups have been waiting for approval since September of 2022 to conclude the final development plans, which I understand is highly irregular. Is the executive branch deliberately delaying permitting approval projects outside of the proposed legislation, which would essentially be imposing a moratorium without legislative authority?
Well, just so you know, that the version three plans that we talked about, they added 129,950,600 additional cubic feet of space, warehousing space. So the warehousing space increased throughout each submission of the plans. So you're talking, again, there's traffic impacts to that. And when you talk about local delivery also being part of that, that's even worse traffic impacts because, again, you're not just limiting it to 18-wheel tractor trailers and container tractor trailers, now you're dealing with every-sized truck that's moving local delivery as well as regional delivery. So it's not like there's been a progression towards a final plan. Each plan has increased significantly in size, with version three increasing by 129,950,600 cubic feet. So there's, you're in essence going right back to ground zero when you talk about a progression like that.
So you're saying there's no intentional delay?
No.
Okay. All right. So if I can move to the bill, page 1, line 5, "Whereas there is a concern about warehousing being combined with wholesaling, processing, distribution, and local delivery in a table of permitted uses in the zoning code." Mr. Blumquist, are you familiar with the recent ruling from a case involving a warehouse? What's that?
Crawford, Prince George's County. Quite familiar with, yes, sir.
So I am not an attorney, so tell me if I'm wrong on this. The case involved an Amazon warehouse positioned on a 708-acre lot that was zoned EIA, or Employment and Industry Industrial Area. Under this classification code, warehouses were permitted in EIA. In this case, based on Prince George's County zoning code, warehouses were actually defined in this case as a building used for a storage of goods and materials in connection with the day-to-day operation of a wholesale or distribution business, or a business that is not located in the same building or property as the warehouse unit. Now, the petitioners in this case argued that the Amazon warehouse would be a hub, not a warehouse, and cited the expected volume of vehicle traffic disqualified the proposed warehouse. In this case, the Planning Board of PG County, the county council in PG County, the Circuit Court, the appellate court, and the Supreme Court all ruled in favor of the Amazon warehouse.
And that's the key, if I may interrupt you right there. In essence, the Board of Appeals, it's not the Board of Appeals, that's not what it's called in Prince George's County. I think it's the District Council. I don't, I'm not good with names, so I haven't memorized the name. But the Board of Appeals, in essence, approved it. Because the Board of Appeals approved it, the process, the administrative law that decided the case, was that as long as it was substantial evidence in the record to support the Board of Appeals' decision, there was no basis for the appellate court to overturn that decision. So that never really addressed what, you know, the changes.
Not the moratorium. I agree with you. But just bear with me one minute, I'm going to get to my point here. What was compelling from the Supreme Court of Maryland ruling was it cited in Marzullo versus Call. The case pertained to the zoning issues as well, and the court gave the finding that that case, that I believe are relevant to the Harford County, proposed light industrial zoning code standard. The written opinion in that case, I'm going to summarize it, it says, "We, you should neither add or delete language so as to reflect and attempt not evidence in the plain and ambiguous language of a statute, and we do not construe a statute with force or subtle interpretation that limit or extend its application." In the case of Harford County's industrial zoning code, it states that the district is intended for permit a mixed or light manufacturing comma warehousing and services uses. So the way I read that Supreme Court opinion is that they cannot add or interpret anything to the zoning code, which meaning the warehouses listed in our county code means just that, nothing less or nothing more. Subsequently, meaning that the Supreme Court would uphold any Harford County zoning code against arguments that meaning the mega warehouses or the large warehouses isn't reflective of today's standard in the current zoning code. Would you agree with that?
Chief Jordan, that's precisely why we requested the moratorium, because what the state of business in 1982 bears no resemblance to the state of business in 2023. And that's precisely the argument that the petitioners made in the Crawford case, the Prince George's County case. They didn't prevail because the Board of Appeals said, no, we read the code as permitting the use, and therefore, since that was the reading of the Board of Appeals, as long as there was arguable evidence in the record to support that decision, it would not be overturned. And so that's why that argument got no consideration. What we're asking here is, we recognize that the state of business in 1982 is much different than the state of business in 2023, so let's freeze that spectrum of uses, and let's reexamine it, and let's come back with something that we think's reflective of the state of affairs in 2023. And so that's the whole purpose of the moratorium.
I just, I must remember that the objective here is that what our county looks like, what is built where, should not, should, that belongs to this body right here. You all ought to be deciding what's permitted and how our county develops, not the Maryland Courts of Appeals, the Supreme Court, or the Circuit Court. That if we don't act now, you all have no power, and we're trying to give you the power to determine what goes where, what's an appropriate use, what's an appropriate location. We're not trying to take that away from you, we're trying to give you all that power. If we don't act, you don't have that power. That power belongs to the courts. And I firmly believe that the judiciary is not at all the right body to determine the future state of our county. I do not think that they're equipped to do that. They don't represent our county, they don't represent your geography, they were never elected by the people that you were elected by. That fundamentally, that duty belongs in this body, and that's what- what we're trying to do, is make sure that, that responsibility, that ability belongs to you all, not to people sitting down in Annapolis. Thank you.
Yeah. And I agree with you. And I'm going to get to it here shortly, but I think there's a process in place through the master, there's a master plan use evaluation, there's comprehensive rezoning that we do routinely evaluate our zoning code and our permitted uses. But just, if you can bear with me just a little longer here. If we could turn to page one, line number 10, it says, "Whereas the nature and impact of modern warehouse facilities is significantly different than the zoning code could have anticipated for warehouse uses that are not permitted by right." My question would be, just going back to what we just mentioned a moment ago, wouldn't the 2016 master land use plan and comprehensive zoning be considered in modern times?
Depends on which, which use. I mean, some uses have come in then and some since then.
But if it wasn't modern, wouldn't, wouldn't we identify it as not being modern in 2016?
We can't, you know, we can't speak for what was identified or not. All we can, all we can say is that this use category has not changed since 1982. But the kinds of uses within this category have changed significantly.
Where warehouses?
And, and there doesn't appear that anyone in, in the interim has focused on this issue. It certainly, it certainly is not discussed in specific in any of the master plans.
Where warehouses identified as a problem in 2016?
I don't believe that they were. But I, but I, I'll be honest, I haven't read in minutia the plans.
All right. Next talking point, page 11, line 13, "Whereas the large warehouse facilities provide little in the way of jobs in meaningful economic growth and development from the local communities where such facilities are located." My question is, how, how are you validating that statement? Is that through property taxes or business income?
I'm actually going into them and looking. You got a 1.2 million square foot facility that doesn't, that's not mechanized, a 1.2 million square foot facility that's not even mechanized, only employs 125 people at fairly low wages.
I have, I'm sorry to interrupt, sir. Different numbers than that. I just want to quote just, just one moment. The other, last week, we had the treasurer for the county come, and the general fund, commercial, and industrial assessable base said from FY 2018 to FY 2022, an increase of 7.9%. It grew 374 million point four over those four years. Just doing, just a little research.
Property tax, though. You're talking property tax.
Right. But just doing, just a little research, according to the State Department of Cessant and Taxation, the 2023 property tax income, which isn't listed in this, was 3,388,572 for the Perryman area. Now, that incorporates all the businesses, not just property tax. So in 2023, that same year, the personal property tax, which will be equipment, equipment inventory of those warehouses or whatever businesses down there, was 1,631,141. In addition, the business created down there were 3,632 jobs, which is more than the 132 that was just mentioned. Now, I could tell you, just the projections for the Mitchell properties projected and bringing in $2,077,000 in property tax and $1,253,570 with 2,450 jobs. Those are the projections. So altogether, that's over 7 million roughly. I'm not a math major, with over 5,000 jobs.
Yeah. I mean, look, I can't, I can't respond to projections by people who want to develop. You're asking me, what I can tell you is that, that you asked about facilities, and we toured these facilities. When you take, hopefully you'll get property tax no matter what you build down there. It's not really an issue of property tax. We're not, we're not proposing that these areas be turned into parklands. That's not the proposal here, Chairman. What we're proposing is that the facilities that are going in do have a deleterious, potential deleterious impact on the surrounding property owners, and there are deleterious impacts that you can expect. And what you're reviewing are certainly matters that would be relevant as we move forward to designing the legislation. Which, I think the point you're not, you're not seeing here is that if we wait for the next master plan, every, every conceivable square foot of land that we could use will be gone. Every, I mean, this stuff's moving quickly. So if you want to kiss it all goodbye, if you want, if you want to develop the, to the extent that I've already quoted in my testimony, if you want that, you're going to, you're going to, you're going to do the biggest developments Harford County has ever seen. It's going to chew up all this square footage, and, and I'm telling you that these are not the kind of jobs, you know, that I'm sitting here thinking, yeah, I want my son, my grandson to be a box stacker in a warehouse anyplace in Harford County. Folks, we're chased, it's about time that we, we focus on economic development, that the potential we've really got. I'm bullish in Harford County. We've got critical locations, public safety, great schools, smart people. We're churning out really educated young, young people. And what are we chasing? We're chasing box stackers. And that's not appropriate. And yeah, if you, if you pave over 23 acres, and, and that's going to yield you some property tax, it will. Now, how much of that do we get? That's, that's the first question. But, but beyond that, the economic development potential, these, this is the land. This is our future. This is our economic, these are the lands that we have for economic development. And once you've put a 3 million square foot facility on that, you've defined that property. It's there. You're not going to undo that. The amount that goes into that, and, and we've looked, you know, you've, you've got the challenges where if one of these things go down, if the economy changes, you're going to be stuck with that, because that warehouse will simply go bankrupt. And now we're stuck with this massive facility that nobody wants to lease, because what the heck do you, how do you use something that's 3 million square feet for anything other than supporting the global economy by stacking lots of Chinese-made toilet paper on it? That's the only possible use for these things. So, you know, I appreciate that, that your zeal, but what this really belongs to is a hearing where you can actually, I mean, if we put the moratorium in place, we can look at these things. And, and to suggest that, let's just wait and do it in the next master plan, it will all be gone. We will have defined, Harford County will be defined as, as the warehouse county. We're not going to be defined as the high-tech, the high-tech manufacturing county, and those jobs and that income is not going to support, long-term, the income, the tax revenue that we need to sustain the public education, the policing, the fire, the EMS that we need. It's not going to do it. We're already, we, we're basically going to double what's already over there, and that's not doing it now. So you're, you're sort of willing to ignore, when I hear what you're saying, we have to look at, you know, the pros and the minuses, and there's some substantial minuses here. And I think that's what we were asking you all to take account of.
I think you were getting ready to say, I'm willing to ignore, but all I'm going off is, is the legislation that was written. And in the legislation that was written, it says, "Filities provide little in the way of jobs in meaningful economic growth." And all I'm saying is, I pulled the State Department of Cessant Taxation, and it's over $5 million, almost 5.5 million. And this is just pre-existing Perryman Peninsula tax revenue with over, excuse me, that is wrong. So the pre-existing's are 3,388,000 with 3,632 jobs. So it does have jobs. I understand box stackers.
Respect 3 million towards our tax revenue. I don't want to say chump change, but, you know, I spend that much on, you know, ambulance costs me over half a million dollars just to, just so. I'm going to spend more than that this year. You guys are going to prove it, just for some refitted ambulances. So if you're suggesting to me that $3 million in tax revenue, I should be doing backflips over, it's not there. I need income tax revenue from people working in plants that are making $150,000 a year, $100,000 a year for good welding jobs, good electric jobs, good technical jobs. That's what we're going after, Council. We're not going after box stackers. We, we need to be pursuing high-paying jobs, or we're backing ourselves in a corner where all the good developable industrial land is gone. And all I'm asking is for a chance for us to look at that before, because it's going to go. It will go real fast. If you don't do this, overnight, all of the good industrial land that's really, you know, usable for this stuff, adjacent to APG, on 95, adjacent to railroad tracks, all on public, the land's served by public transportation, that's just gone. And now, I guess, if you want, we could just rezone a bunch of the land in the north end and open that up for heavy industrial if we need to later on. But I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing where the land is going to be that we're going to put the future jobs on that will actually sustain the tax base that we want once this is gone. It's not there.
Well, can, do you know what kind of businesses will occupy the warehouse structures? And I'd say, just, just from my understanding, that the businesses, the developers, are going to recruit different types of businesses. So you may have pharmaceutical companies, you may have defense contractors, or you may have warehouse, warehouses. Mr. Bloom, do you, do you know for sure?
Not in a million, not in a million square foot footprint. You're not putting that kind of business. You want to talk about 100,000, maybe, 200,000, maybe, but not in a million square foot.
Yeah. If you start talking the 100,000s, we're all ears. You know, 100,000 square foot, that you're probably, you're not talking mass distribution. It's the, it's the 100, I'm sorry, we're talking a million square feet. You're not going to overbuild a building unless we're going to move like all the General Motors to Perryman. You're not going to, you're not going to get anything that does actual manufacturing in a million square foot.
It's my understanding that the 5 million square foot warehouses are all broken up. It's not one building worth 5 million square foot.
That's right. Yeah, but it's, you know, you're talking.
So it's smaller buildings.
They're not, no, they're not very small. These are not small. A million square feet is not small.
Mr. Casely, hold on just a second. Folks, this is the last time.
I'd like to go to page two, line number six. The Perryman, no, the peninsula contains a large aquifer complex that supplies potable drinking water for the county, and considerations is required as to how large expanses of impervious services will impact the recharge of such aquifer, aquifer complex, excuse me. So historically, in 1997, it's my understanding that the county downzoned the portion, a portion of the Mitchell property to, from GI to light industrial, as well as a portion of the property was upzoned from R1 to LI. And I believe a wellfield protection act ensues that the water is protected. Would you say that the wellfield protection measures were addressed with these two proactive measures over 26 years ago?
I'm sorry. Could you repeat the question again?
Whether the existing wellfield protections make alleviating concerns that the properties are.
I think that's part of this, part of this look into these types of uses, we're going to evaluate the wellfield protection district, because, you know, 700 acres, while it won't be entirely impervious surface, a significant portion of that 700 acres will be impervious surface. And given that these are high-generating or high-yield wells that are very important to the county, I think it is also not just a zoning code, looking at setbacks and height and things like that, it's also looking at those environmental criteria and the wellfield, wellhead protection district that we have, and making sure that these types of uses are adequately addressed in that section of the county.
But I'll just add that one of our concerns is that we draw from a large aquifer that doesn't know the difference between Aberdeen Improving Ground side of the line and Harford County side of the line. And, and as we draw water out on our side of the line, it's important that we have, the wellfield is being replenished so that we don't draw, there's pollutants in APG. We all know that. We've done a lot of work to try to remove those. But there's a concern, and it has, we are increasingly, you know, we draw the pollutants out of the APG land to these, and the best protection for that is to maintain infusion, keeping those, those wellfields full. So it is a risk. It's a concern. I have that concern very much. We don't want to have to treat our, our, these, these critical wellfields for leachate out of Aberdeen Improving Ground being drawn into the wellfields if we're not sufficiently replenishing this over the next, over the future decades.
Okay. Moving on, page two, line 11, "The primary access road to the peninsula has insufficient transportation capacity to service existing development and the traffic associated with the large warehouses." I'd like to just kind of go through the chronological history of the Perryman Peninsula. In 1988, the master land use plan states Perryman is designated industrial commercial in recognition of the existing and proposed industrial uses in the area, which include the BG&E power plant, the water treatment sewage plant, the freight railroads. In 2004, the county reaffirms the master plan in the industrial development for Perryman by stating, "In the middle, in the middle position of Perryman Peninsula, mixed commercial and industrial development provides a basic for new economic development opportunities," indicating that the peninsula is an industrial priority for economic development. In 2016, the master plan reaffirms the industrial direction of the Perryman area again. In 2017, the county council passes resolution 12-17 to add 114 acres to the Perryman Enterprise Zone, which essentially incentivizes development. So my initial point is, the industrial plan, which was routinely evaluated for proper infrastructure for the Perryman community, was longstanding. And I think, Mr. Grimm, I know that you were employed by the planning and zoning department in the past. During any of those master plan use assessments, were any of these concerns brought to light?
First, let me say, I think we're specifically looking, you're talking about the Mitchell property, and I want to draw your attention back to that this moratorium is not specific to this property. And so I don't want to get too specific about any one property. But to talk, to answer your question about land use, you got to remember that the land use plan goes back to the 60s when we first had our land use plans done in the county. And at that time, there was thought that there would be a bridge that would traverse Church Creek and serve the Perryman Peninsula. And throughout time, through the 70s and 80s, it was anticipated that the west side of 159 would be mostly residential, and then the east side would be predominantly industrial. Since that time, in 1996, with the update in the master land use plan at that time, which I was not employed by the county at that time, but that was when it changed to industrial on the west side of Maryland 159. And then subsequent to that, with the subsequent comprehensive rezoning, then it was rezoned to light industrial. And one of the things that has gotten lost over the years is that in between that time, that there was a plan to have a bridge come over Church Creek, that kind of went away in subsequent land use plans. And then when you move forward to the 1990s, there was discussion in those plans about providing two roads to serve Perryman. In the transportation element plan, they're known as Perryman Road A and Perryman Road B. Perryman Road A is the one that is by the Opus East Gate properties that will eventually tie into 715. And then the other one is Road B, which is the road that was anticipated that would serve this side of Maryland 159 and the potential industrial development that would be seen there. The problem is, is that what could not be foreseen 40 years ago was the increasing challenges with being able to provide the road infrastructure to serve the Perryman Peninsula with the Road B that was anticipated to come across the Mitchell property, cross Cranberry Run, and then come out Mitchell Lane. Every day that we move past, or every day that passes, there are more environmental regulations, and it becomes increasingly more challenging to construct not only the road, but a significant bridge to traverse the floodplain, non-tidal wetlands, the creek itself, tie into Route 40 with a stop-controlled intersection, a major intersection. So those challenges, at this point, are almost unable to be overcome. You can overcome anything by throwing enough money and engineering at it, but that doesn't always make sense. So the land use plan itself, right now, still envisions that Road B. And I think it's a fallacy to believe that that Road B would be constructed, or can be constructed this time. And I don't think that the county is in a position to construct that. So as part of this analysis, as we move forward with looking at what we have before us, we'll have to look at those transportation element plans and what is, in the future, to serve the Perryman Peninsula, whatever may be there. There's going to have to be look at an evaluation of the roads.
No, and I agree with that. And I think the Woodley Road Initiative, which is nearing approval, to my understanding, right? I think it's, it's close. In addition, I think the developer for the Mitchell property was prepared to assist with the improvement of road infrastructure to alleviate, at their cost, any traffic concessions. Would, I mean, have you had any, any consideration on that?
The Traffic Impact Analysis, or TIA as we call it, has been under review, and there's been several series of that plan submitted, and there's been discussions with the State Highway Administration, and of course, County Department of Public Works and Planning and Zoning Staff have reviewed those plans and offered comments, and it's still ongoing in that review.
All right. Thank you. I do have just one more point, I promise. Page two, line number 17, "Whereas the Harford County Council introduced and unanimously adopted Bill Number 22003, which provided for a moratorium on development of building for either business or industrial use on the Perryman Peninsula, which was vetoed by County Executive Glassman." use on the Perryman Peninsula, which was vetoed by County Executive Glassman." The point could be the most compelling in the legality of the proposed, which was realized by this bill last year, and I can take kind of just a quote from Councilman Wagner at the time, that stated, "When you passed, when the council passed, the most legal thing to do tonight would be to vote against this bill." Following the passing of the bill, 7 to 0, the county sought outside council to provide analysis and opinion of that passed legislation. Mr. Blumquist, are you familiar with this opinion at all?
I am familiar with the opinion. I disagree with the, well, the opinion wasn't with respect to the moratorium, the opinion was respect, the opinion on the veto was with respect to all of the planning and meeting elements that were combined with the moratorium. So we eliminated those in this bill. This is a straightforward moratorium. I refer to Tahoe's here, Presidential Council Inc. versus Tahoe Regional Planning Agency 535, United States Reports 302. It's a 2002 decision of the Supreme Court of the United States. It talks about the whole use and how a moratorium is properly framed versus improperly framed with respect to Lake Tahoe community, which underwent almost a two and a half year moratorium while they completely redid their environmental concerns and their planning concerns around Lake Tahoe because development was causing desecration of the lake and desecration of the surrounding communities. So I'm very comfortable, and I pattern this, there's old Maryland law, but I pattern this basically on the pattern that was set forth and approved by the Supreme Court in that case. So I would suggest, you know, we thought very long and hard about the legality of what we sent over, and that's what I base my decisions, you know, in terms of how we set this up.
After reviewing it-
Good track record so far for you guys, just so you know.
After reviewing it, in my, just my opinion, it is relative to the current proposed moratorium, which indicates the bill could be a violation of property owner's rights, causing expensive lawsuits and liabilities on everyone involved. In fact, the law firm that provided the opinion based off of my review, this is just my assessment, said, "A short moratorium that entirely deprives an owner of the use of the owner's property would be a taking. Absent agreement with the developer, the most likely litigation by the developer appears to be inverse condemnation, suit for damages and perhaps equitable relief against the county with perhaps federal civil rights against legislators in their official capacities." The Civil Rights Act of 1871, Section 1983 outlines that government officials can be sued in their official capacity, in their individual capacity. Following that review, County Executive Glassman, at the time, vetoed the previous attempt to introduce the moratorium under Bill Number 2203, citing that the moratorium was not legal. Once the veto was initiated, the council could have easily overturned the veto, as it was 7 to 0, but they didn't, because of the likelihood of the moratorium being illegal in a result of long, expensive lawsuits.
Again, so all those issues were raised. Inverse condemnation, Section 1983 in the Tahoe here, a presidential council case, in the Monterey Peninsula case. I'll be happy to share, you know, share with all of you my PowerPoint presentation on that that I did to the International Mentalism Law Association, but that, I worked long and hard at that, and this doesn't create those problems. Now, if we start talking individual properties, you got to look at, has the right vested or not? And when we make decisions, if we think the right's vested, that's a different analysis than if the right has invested. And that's the whole purpose of the moratorium, is to stop vesting so that we can look at our regime and come up with a regime that we think makes the most sense for today.
Thank you, Mr. Blumquist. Mr. President, I just have a closing remark, and then I'll turn it over. In closing, based off of what was discussed, I firmly believe that the moratorium on development for warehousing, wholesaling, processing, distribution, and local delivery is illegal. Based on the previous talking points and research, I believe that the zoning code has legally authorized the development of warehousing in village business, B3, commercial, industrial, light industrial, and general industrial. An infringement on any development company that is in the permit or the authorization process will result in expensive lawsuits that the county cannot afford. I believe it will be a violation of their Fifth Amendment right that constitute an unlawful taking of private property without just compensation. These property owners have purchased and are paying taxes on property that the county won't allow them to utilize within the zoning code. Once again, at a time when balanced economic growth is extremely important to sustain our local economy, this moratorium will send a message on business, community, that Harford County is not the right place to establish business and cannot be trusted. You add the potential loss of business to Harford County with the long and expensive lawsuits that will come, it's a recipe for economic disaster. At a time when the county has established a notion of a structural deficit, why in the world would this moratorium be a good idea, much less legal? I 100% welcome a discussion on the evaluation of a master plan and comprehensive rezoning, but cannot condone changing the rules in the middle of the game because you don't like the type of businesses that authorize. With that, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Mr. Jennings, your dinner?
That was quite a long introduction. So, good evening, County Executive Casely, Mr. Blumquist, Mr. Grimm. I appreciate you guys coming here, and I thank you for bringing this back up. As I was on the council before, and I was one of the people that voted for the moratorium, and County Executive vetoed it and also threatened us. So to move forward with that, so I think that was part of the reason that we all voted no prior to that. It's something that needs to be looked at. It's a six-month moratorium. That's something that's going to be in forever. Once you build these, they're not going away. People have, you know, people have rights. It wasn't looked at before. We tried to get it looked at before. We were told, you know, do something else, threaten, we'll run somebody against you. That was intimidation from the other end, so I appreciate you guys coming over here and putting forth the effort to look at this as a moratorium, to look at what we're doing with these properties. Doesn't say we're not building something, doesn't say we're not doing something, just says we might not have the right class codes for what this is. And not only that, but the traffic. The traffic that's already out there with the tractors is, you know, we, I see pictures all the time, I'm sent photos all the time, you know, there's no parking areas, no stopping areas, they ignore that. I know we've had police officers out there, they have taken them, but they just don't care, they just keep doing it on and on again. I think we have a right to the citizens to look at this, to make sure that, you know, we're doing something properly. If we get sued, okay, they're going to sue us regardless. You know, so, you know, and I appreciate, Mr. Blumquist, I know you've got quite a track record. I appreciate that you, you know, brought up some of the prior classifications and how you drafted this particular event after the Salt Lake, I'm sorry, Lake Tahoe. So I am, I do look forward to that. I mean, there were some other questions. I know Mr. Pennman brought up some good points, but I think there's a lot of other points, and I think once you look at this, if you don't do something now, it's done. I don't know what considered vested is. Is vested putting in stormwater pipes and clearing a road? I particularly don't think that's vesting. You know, I do know some people have spent some money putting some things in the ground. But, you know, where is vesting? Is vesting, do you got permits? Is vesting, I don't know the definition of that, so. And I think, I don't know if I have any other, have any questions? I assume, and I'll ask this question, that you guys have already started looking and gathering information about what we can do, and hopefully, you know, maybe this can be done, you know, in a much quicker fashion. It sounds like, Mr. Blumquist, you have some things already together. Looking forward to, or, Mr. Grimm, coming over to us?
We have communicated.
Yeah.
Mr. Grimm's been looking at it for a while. My instructions were that I'm optimistic this council's going to do the right thing to put the moratorium in place. I don't want this moratorium to stay in place any longer than it's absolutely necessary. We're looking, we're moving forward, but this is tough stuff to do, and we'll get you something as soon as we can.
And I think six months is fair. You know, maybe even nine-
Six months, but, you know, I don't want to start down this road, and then for some reason we run out of time, you're trying to get the days in and get everything right, and then we run out of time, and that would be disaster after all the effort it's going to take to do this. So we're confident six months would do it. We're hopeful that less, but we'll all find out as we progress through this process.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. That's all I have.
Ms. Alt.
Thank you for being here this evening. I'd like to follow up. What does exactly define vested in the state of Maryland?
Vested is permits and shovels in the ground, legally issued permits.
Okay. And you speak of these high-tech jobs, and I know the Heat Center has been vacant for quite some time, and wasn't that built for high-tech jobs?
No, the Heat Center was built, you're talking the Heat Center itself was built as an education center.
For high-tech jobs?
Well, it was to discuss, I mean, everything. You had an education center there, people to get master's degrees and the like. I mean, I think a lot of that, as when you built the facility for Towson University next to the college, kind of took a lot of the, a lot of the purpose out of there. Why, we don't need to have a competing center for education when you've got Towson University 10 minutes down the road. That didn't make any sense, and the college stepped up with a lot of stuff as well.
Okay, and you talk about the accessory use. Who will make the decision on what an accessory use is, and how is that going to be defined?
Typically, that opinion comes from the Department of Planning and Zoning, and sometimes in consultation with the Law Department. I've had conversations with business owners in the community already about the moratorium, and informed them that it did not, did not impact them because the nature of their use, their principally permitted use was, I'm making this up, but, you know, they were a plumbing contractor who had a 20,000 square foot building, and they wanted to add 30,000 square feet. Their primary business is a construction service use, or a personal service use, or what have you. Their primary use is not warehousing, wholesaling, and processing. It's accessory to that, and generally, the director of planning makes that decision.
So will those permits still be issued within the six months?
Yes.
Okay. And then, as you know, we've, I'm sure you're aware, we've already received multiple letters implying that there will be lawsuits against the county. And as far as personally and professionally, how is the administration, you know, handling, has there been any thought on that and the amount of money it's going to cost the taxpayers?
I mean, I'll start off with that. You know, when we came into this office, we really didn't have a law department. We had a law contracting department that contracted out virtually everything, and we were spending millions of dollars on legal fees. Since then, we've been in the process, my administration started, we've been in the process of actually building a legitimate law department with real lawyers who understand the civil law, not the criminal law, but actually the civil law, and can give good advice, who have strong reputations both statewide and nationally, and who can give us opinions and defend us and not squander this county's resources on $400 an hour law firms. So, you know, unfortunately, when you're in that kind of position, you have to capitulate because your legal fees just render you unable to actually govern. I mean, look, are we going to stand up for the citizens' rights? Are we going to stand up for the future of this county? Are we going to do the right thing? Or are we going to cower and say, oh my gosh, I don't want to be sued? I'm sorry, I just can't, I can't take the ladder. You know, I left this council to go to war, spent three years of war from that seat right there. Sometimes you just got to stand up and do the right thing and not be too, you know, don't worry too much about every consequence. We're going to give you good, solid legal advice. That's what we pledge to do for you. I don't want to get sued. I don't want you all to get sued. We're not going to go off just willy-nilly. We're, we want to do the right thing, and you know what? I don't want to get sued because I don't want to take away people's rights if they're entitled to. We want to do the right thing. I very much respect the U.S. Constitution, the Maryland Constitution, the Declaration of Rights. I respect all those very much. And my intent is not to do anything that contradicts legal rights given by either the U.S. Constitution or the Maryland Constitution, Maryland Declaration of Rights. We're going to do everything we can to adhere to the letter of every one of those documents, and that's how we're going to act throughout.
Has there been any consideration as to what impact this would have on the residents in the county that work in the construction industry?
I think that that's why we're trying to limit this to six months. We're not, you know, we're not taking, we're not suggesting that any of these properties become parklands. We're not, we're not, if we want to park them, we do buy parklands. We'll go after lands and buy for parks. We're talking about a six-month moratorium in a county that's pretty active and a state in a, we're in a pretty strong region right here. So our intent is certainly not to negatively impact these jobs, and that's why we're anxious to move forward quickly, get a resolution, and move back forward.
All right, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, counsel? All right, so at this time, we'll go ahead and turn it over to the public. Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
We do, Mr. President. We have 53 so far this evening.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. You can sit over there if you'd like. Thank you. Thank you all. Ms. Dixon, I think with 50, how many?
53.
All right, we're going to go to two minutes per speaker. Ma'am?
I'd like to just say that I think it's such an important matter that many of us, some of you haven't been involved as much as we have been. I think it's unfair to cut us back when we work for-
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. You can, you can continue if you're signed up to speak to express your opinion.
I don't have five minutes.
I don't care. That's it right now. Two minutes per. Call your first speaker.
Our first speaker is Chuck Miesan, followed by Glenn Gillis.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Chuck Miesan, 1812 Park Beach Drive. I've lived on the peninsula for 50 years and stand before you to provide testimony and support County Executive Bob Casely's warehouse moratorium bill. Those set the profit for mega warehouse developments make the argument against the moratorium that it would infringe on the owner's property rights under the Fifth Amendment. I make the argument that if you don't support this legislation, you're infringing on the property rights of hundreds of your citizens here, who will be negatively impacted by these mega warehouses placed on improper zoning designations near the neighborhoods. And I'm changing this up a lot on the fly.
My apologies.
That's okay. The Casely Moratorium is warranted. This January, Harford County submitted a response to the court in Abting Woods case. The county admitted failures in the previous administration's P&amp;Z department. The county states there are numerous deficiencies with the planning and zoning approval process and decision. The moratorium goes on to say, I'm sorry, the memorandum goes on to say that the department failed to provide Department of Natural Resources notice of waivers, and failed to make proper determinations of grants, of granting waivers. This information cast doubt, serious doubt, over all prior determinations made by the past administration and the P&amp;Z department. The Casely Moratorium is warranted. Just last week, the county submitted their response to a lawsuit filed by Chesapeake Real Estate Group against the county demanding a temporary restraining order over perceived delays and slowdowns. In response to this lawsuit, the county stated, "Without question, the permitted use charts have not been considered and modified to keep pace with developments in the way warehousing is currently conducted and have changed since 1982." The Casely Moratorium is warranted. In the same response, the county said mega warehouses provide de minimis economic development, and when considering the disruption to traffic and inability of existing roads and infrastructure to accommodate the project, that it may well constitute a net economic drain. A lot more to say, but this Casely Moratorium is warranted.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Glenn Gillis, 1936, Park Beach Drive in Perryman. I support Bill 23-005 with the amendments proposed by the 3P, Protect Perryman Peninsula Coalition. We've heard a lot of the opponents talk about this bill and the negative impact it will have of moratoriums. I'll be able to cover only two of my three points. One, moratoriums, I'll take my hat off. Moratoriums should not be used as a growth tool, especially when counter to the county's development and economic- development and economic policy. This bill, like other temporary moratorium legislation passed by this council, seeks to allow the review of areas of concern and to develop more sustainable approaches to land use and zoning before allowing ill-conceived development to go forward. In some cases, moratorium may be necessary to prevent imminent harm to quality of life, economy, public health, and property values. Another point, modern society needs distribution centers. Harford County must compete in the regional real estate markets for these centers. Social and retail trends are driving a present demand for distribution facilities. However, like malls, office spaces, steel factories, these mega warehouse houses are forever buildings that tend to significantly change the landscape of a community, are viable for a relatively short period of time, and then become long-term burdens. Decisions on such projects should not be taken lightly or expedited. Downward trends in distribution center rooms are already being seen, and there are reasonable concerns that these last-in projects will never be fully utilized and soon become long-term scourges on their communities. Finally, the lust for perceived short-term economic gains or near-term, near-sighted municipal competitions should not be a reason for doing the wrong thing. The moratorium is a bold and essential step in taking a measured and strategic approach at the best use of valuable land resources within our county. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tripp Bailey, followed by Justin Pickering.
Name and address, please.
Tripp Bailey, 511 West Lancaster Avenue. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight to voice my opposition to the proposed warehouse moratorium. I'm here tonight on behalf of Johnson Development Associates. We own commercial property in the county, and we previously viewed Harford County as business-friendly and encouraging of economic development, but we now have serious concerns about our future business prospects here. I'd like to begin, to convey that my company's belief that the proposed warehouse moratorium represents an illegal taking of private property, as there's no proposed competition to the affected property owners. As drafted, moratorium would affect all property owners in the county who own or operate out of a facility that does any warehousing, wholesaling, processing, distribution, or local delivery. There's no clarity in the legislation as to what properties would or would not be subject to the moratorium. My company owns one facility that we built two years ago, and has another project where we are proposing three, three buildings of approximately 200,000 square feet each. The buildings are designed to be subdivided, so we, we would expect tenants ranging from 50,000 to 100,000 square feet in each of the buildings. We would expect to get a lot of demand for these facilities from defense contractors, which I know is an important business for the county. And just to give the council an example of another tenant that we recently leased a building like this to, we recently leased a building to Walbox. They manufacture electric charging stations for vehicles. So, high-tech manufacturing, I think there's a ton of different uses that these types of buildings can accommodate, and with such a wide-ranging moratorium, you're really, there's a ton of unintended consequences for this type of legislation, which obviously, as we heard tonight, is targeted towards a few specific projects in the county with kind of million-square-foot mega warehouse as, as being the target. I do understand that the county wants to review their zoning code and potentially make changes moving forward, but the county cannot do this in a way that would invalidate existing approvals that property owners have secured and relied upon in making investment decisions. The legislation as drafted will have major and wide-ranging unintended.
Sir, please bring your comments to a close.
I believe that if any legislation is passed, that it will need to be amended to clarify what.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Call your next speaker.
Pat Pollard, followed by Dominique Gillis.
Name and address, please.
Good evening. Pat Pollard, 1805 Woodhome Drive. Good evening, Mr. President, Councilwoman Sodlesboyle, Councilmen. My name is Pat Pollard. I'm chairman of the Greater Harford Committee. As most of you know, our organization is made up of over 60 Harford County business leaders, with the mission of giving the business community a voice and working with political, government, and community leaders to ensure Harford County grows economically in a smart and responsible manner. Many of you attended our event in Annapolis on February 1st that promoted Harford County to elected state officials. This is not a statement for or against any warehouse or any specific properties on the viability of those properties. Approximately a year ago, at a similar public hearing, I stated the Greater Harford Committee was against the proposed moratorium on the Mitchell property in Perryman. That bill was vetoed by the previous county executive on the belief that it was illegal. It is our understanding, the council at the time, received an outside legal opinion that agreed with the previous county executive's opinion. We felt legislating by moratorium is bad policy that violates the rights of landowners and will deter future investment in Harford County, which will eventually harm our local economy. We still feel the same way. Bill 23-005, as written, is even broader and more vague than last year's proposed moratorium. The Greater Harford Committee is against Bill 23-005. There's a codified process in Harford County required for an owner to develop their property. It begins with comprehensive rezoning, includes the DAC, planning and zoning, water sewer, state highways, among others. We feel the property owner and developer should be held to this current standard and legal process. Arbitrary moratoriums are not and should not be part of that process. We would encourage the council, the county executive, to work together with the property owner, developer, and citizens of the community, and other county and state agencies, to reach an acceptable outcome. And finally, as I stated the last time I spoke about this, whether or not these properties were built, especially with respect to the Perryman Peninsula, the county owes the Perryman Peninsula better transportation infrastructure. They've been promised this for over 30 years, and anybody that drives back there can see why. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Dominique Gillis, 1936 Park Beach Drive. Totally revamping my now-two minutes, and I, I'm here tonight in support of Bill 23-005 with the amendments proposed by the 3P Protect Perryman Peninsula Coalition. Now is the appropriate time to take a short pause and evaluate the requirements and benefits of warehouses and their impacts to Harford, Harford County communities. We have heard from opponents to this bill, and advocates for the Craig Mitchell development that, one, the property was zoned light industrial for many years, two, it is in the enterprise zone, and, three, permitted use of warehousing on this property has long been planned. They argue that this proposed moratorium is a targeted effort to infringe on their rights. Well, I'm going to skip a lot of things that we will probably hear several times over, but what I will focus on is on this designation of an enterprise zone, and how specifically warehouses, future warehouses in, in the county will more than likely go into that zone or into our development envelope and those kind of areas. And I just wanted to bring up a point, first off, that, that while the, the Mitchell property is within the development and enterprise envelope, something like a fertile farmland surrounded by resident, residential community just doesn't seem like property that meets the criteria for land and economic revitalization. In fact, there's a nationwide trend away from enterprise incentives. I'm going to bring up a, a study that was done in 2021, a Pew report that states how decades of research have shown that government, governments have struggled to effectively implement incentive programs. The study indicated that programs such as enterprise zones, which are geographically targeted, tax breaks, and other incentives for businesses, developers, and investors often do not successfully achieve their ultimate goal, which is to assist the people who live in the affected communities.
Ms. Gillis, your time's up, but I would like to tell you this, anyone here tonight, your full comments could be emailed to us tomorrow, tonight, at any time, because as your husband said, this decision is not going to be expedited. We're going to wait and hear all comments, written or verbal. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. I've mailed mine.
Thank you.
Janet Hardy, followed by Angela Rose.
Good evening, Councilwoman, President, and Councilmember. Congratulations on your. My name is Janet Hardy, and I live at 1423 Abingdon Road. I live right across from, okay, thank you, thank you. I live right across the road from the Abingdon Business Park, and that is mostly my concern, as has been stated before, about the enterprise zone. These 326 acres of mature forests and wetlands should not have been included in the enterprise zone. The enterprise zone is for the revitalization, redevelopment, and underutilization of a property, which this does not meet that criteria. Also, I'm interested in the fact that there are, there's a road going into the department, into this development, right across from where I live, and I'm concerned about the heavy truck traffic that would go into from the very small Abingdon Road. Also, I wanted to mention that there are at least 10 developments that I can pretty much count and name that would be within walking or biking distance of this mature woods, and that would be an impact on the schools that, that border the property. There is two elementary schools on Old Post, at the Old Post Road School on Route 7, and there is the, the Church School at St. Francis that is also bordering the property. These kids and the neighborhoods would be impacted by a warehouse development. So, I'd really appreciate it if you would vote for 23-005, which gives the county a chance to examine and refocus on the land use that, the zoning for these properties in Perryman and Abingdon were put into this commercial entity in over 40 years ago, and it's, it's time to, to move toward a better use of land. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Angela Rose, representing the Harford County Chamber of Commerce located at 108 South Bond Street. I'm testifying this evening in opposition of Bill 23-005 as written. The language in Bill 23-005 does not provide a standard for the size or scope of the facilities to which it could apply, and therefore is too vague. The description simply states, "Large warehouse facilities." The lack of specificity, wow, we're a tough word this evening, about the size and scope of facilities targeted in the bill would allow speculation and unclear interpretation, both for those charged with applying it and those whose projects and businesses might be impacted by it. With all due respect to the county executive, we heard him tonight talk about mega warehouses and that large definition, but there is absolutely no designation in the bill. Additionally, the six-month timeline seems excessive for a moratorium. Economic development moves quickly, particularly during the scouting and planning phases. A six-month study could actually delay projects by years, not months. Looking at the fiscal analysis that was posted, talks about, "This bill, if, if adopted, would establish a temporary moratorium, unspecified length, on the issuance of any approvals or permits for the development of warehousing and other related facilities." It then goes on to say that it will have, the moratorium will have a limited fiscal impact to the county in the form of lost revenue. However, we cannot determine the number of property owners who have unsubmitted permits and site plans, so we cannot specify the fiscal impact of this legislation. Lastly, and possibly the largest concern with Bill 23-005, is the indirect message being sent to various businesses and industries. 23-005 creates an uncertainty and fear that building moratoriums can be implemented with no regard to regulations outlined in a master plan. A chamber conducted survey on this bill resulted in a response of, "Clients would possibly not start or halt projects that could be at risk of moratorium, changes to code, or delay costs."
Ms. Rose.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Janine Lacor, followed by Greg Lacor.
Good evening. Janine Lacor, 1820 Park Beach Drive, and I'm here to, I'm here in favor of the moratorium. And I think, as Mr. Grimes said earlier, the longstanding master plan is actually just built on a fallacy, and part of that fallacy is that Perryman Road A and Perryman Road B would be finished. So, based on that, all we have is traffic jams and inadequate infrastructure. Moving along, the Perryman, in 1997, the Perryman Wellhead Protection Plan study, that wasn't implemented. The 2000 Perryman Traffic Study wasn't implemented. The Perryman Visioning, Visioning Study in 2001 wasn't implemented. In 2007, the Harford County Rural Village Study designated nine rural villages. Eight of the nine were located north of Route 1. The further southern rural village was Churchville. Meanwhile, in 1991, the Perryman community was designated as being eligible for historic The county master plan has also indicated that there should be incentives to promote low-impact development and green building practices. That's not implemented. Pursue the accelerated implementation of the Bush River and Deer Creek watershed plans, protect water quality, and conserve natural resources, not implemented. I want to finally point out, as far as historic preservation goes, there were two pristine properties in the Perryman Peninsula that have just been abandoned. Number one, I talked about previously, the Griffith House, that property is actually in complete disrepair, and the final property on the Maryland Historic Register, Poplar Hill, is now home to the 500,000-square-foot Fanatics Warehouse. We have a history of just ignoring what is needed, and none of the promises that have been made have come to fruition on the Perryman Peninsula. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lacor, and thank you for your email this afternoon.
Absolutely.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Greg Lacor, 1820 Park Beach Drive. I'm also in favor of this moratorium. I also am not a mathematician or a lawyer, so there's a lot of things that I do off the cuff, so I don't have people behind me writing for me and telling me what to say. But during this evening, I was listening to a couple of things, and a lot of had to do with tax revenue. What if we filled all the warehousing that is unoccupied right now? Would we get any of that revenue back that you're considering in the future? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ken Shannon, followed by Rig Baldwin.
Good evening. I'm Ken Shannon, with 2044 Park Beach Drive in, in Perryman. First of all, I'd like to say that I'm disappointed that Mr. Pennman used up so much of the people's time that we're all being, having our time cut back by a third. I'm here today in support of Bill Number 23-005 with the amendment submitted by 3P. At the February 7th council meeting, Mr. Pennman, speaking in opposition to the bill, said, "This proposed moratorium stands in stark contrast to any notion of attracting business to Harford County," and he re, he rewrite from that script tonight. As of February 2023, the average annual pay for a warehouse worker in Maryland is $33,219 a year. At the same council meeting, in his State of the County address, Mr. Cassley said that "The county will enhance our relationships with the defense community, including both Aberdeen Proving Ground and the associated defense contractors, with the goal of generating well-paying jobs in Harford County. That is the correct focus for economic development in Southern Harford County." Mr. Pennman said in the February 7th council meeting that he welcomes the idea of a study to assess the positive and negative impact of warehouses in our community. I appreciate that sentiment, but in the meantime, we cannot allow permits to be granted for potentially disastrous industrial development projects in residential communities like Perryman. The out-of-county developers who are pushing that project in Perryman can't be trusted to do right by the community. Instead, Chesapeake Real Estate Group operates in darkness. When I spoke at the January 10th council meeting, I provided a copy. When I spoke at the January 10th council meeting, I provided a copy of the August 2022 email from Craig VP Whit McQuig to Hartford P&amp;Z, changing the project type. I had to submit a Public Information Act request to the Maryland Department of Transportation to get that document. Craig did not communicate the change in their plan to the proposed project's neighbors in Perryman or to that community's representatives, like the county council, who would have an interest in such a major change. Besides adding 130 million cubic feet of space with impacts of road safety, air quality, emergency response times, and noise levels in Perryman, the number of jobs on the largest shift of the freight terminals was reduced from over 2,800 to less than 1,000 positions. We need the pause that the moratorium will provide so that the developers like Craig can figure out their business proposition and explain why they should be able to go forward when they are raising the height of their freight terminals...
Thank you, Mr. Shannon.
...by 60 percent and reducing the number of jobs by 2/3. Please vote in favor...
Thank you, sir.
...of Bill 23-005.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Rig Baldwin, 111 South Coward Street.
I'm sorry, sorry, didn't hear your name.
Rig Baldwin?
Right.
And I'm going to keep my comments as brief as possible to leave time for others. But with all of the prospective benefit that people have been talking about in terms of economic development, basically, I keep hearing the term warehouse cost around, and the zoning code does address what a freight terminal is. A freight terminal is where there are few employees and an incredible amount of traffic because the purpose of that structure is to get freight transferred from one carrier to another. That is, as far as the developer is willing to reveal, that is what appears to be the purpose of this development. A warehouse, as I believe the county attorney spoke to in his testimony, is for stocking goods for use for a company, distributing locally, storing. That is... That's something that could serve the local community. And by putting a freight terminal in an enterprise zone, my personal opinion is that it's essentially running the risk of taking all of the burden of distributing for other people while that money goes to people who manufacture the goods, the people who sell the goods, the people who transport the goods, and none of those entities are here in Hartford County. So I just... I've heard this project characterized in a number of ways. I've spent a significant amount of time with the zoning code, not as much, of course, the county attorney. But this isn't a warehouse, and this is not to serve this community in any way that I can discern. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Ellen Shinelli, followed by Parker Mitchell.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Ellen Shinelli.
How about a doctor?
I am Dr. Ellen Shinelli.
Okay.
I think I used my business email in submitting that. So sorry.
It's all right.
I live at 1704 Park Beach Drive. I first want to thank Council President Vincenti for introducing the bill, 23-005, on behalf of County Executive Bob Cassely, who I'd like to thank as well. This bill will set the stage for needed zoning revisions and environmental regulation for future development. This is critical for the health and well-being of county residents. Any misstep could lead to deadly consequences. Not only am I concerned with my health, but with the health of the community. Studies need to be completed to ensure that our water supply is not tainted. Not only is this important to the many of us in Perryman that utilize private wells, but also the 80,000 residents of Hartford County whose water supplies comes from the Perryman well field. Would you drink water collected from the pavement of a parking lot? Not likely. Yet you're asking 30% of Hartford County to do so. The impervious surfaces created for parking will collect rainwater, which will mix with whatever has been leaking from trucks, cars, and other equipment occupying the lots. The contaminated runoff will enter our water supply. It has been since the year 2000 that the Maryland Department of the Environment conducted a study on water safety and supply of the Perryman well fields. Since then, the Perryman Peninsula has been inundated with warehouses and distribution centers. Over 9 million square feet of buildings, not including the paved roads and parking areas. Paved roads spilling runoff with unknown toxins into the water table. So how will this affect the humans, animals, and plants in the area? We don't know the full ramification. We do know that poisons like benzene, a chemical found in oil and gasoline, will be introduced to the groundwater. Benzene has been linked to cancers, including leukemias and lymphomas. Benzene toxicity targets the central nervous system and immune system, including inhibition of blood cell production.
Ma'am, please bring your comments to a close.
We need to study the consequences of these mega-distribution centers. Please vote yes.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon? Are you saying there's more people in the lobby?
I was just advised the two speakers that we have have made it in, but we do still have others waiting outside. If we have any seats available next to you? If it's okay?
A few seats available if you want to let some people in, a couple at a time. Mr. Mitchell?
Hi, my name is Parker Mitchell. I live at 315 Marina Avenue in Aberdeen. I wanted to talk about a couple of different things. One is, what is a good job? I mean, there are 3,600 jobs on the Perryman Peninsula, and if that's your job, you're pretty darn happy to have it. And all of the businesses in Hartford County commute for the same entry-level people, whether it's better engineering up in Joppa or the people on the peninsula. I've seen most of the starting salaries around $19 an hour and as high as $23 an hour. Many of them have benefits on the first day of work. That's fantastic. I mean, as the farmers that we were, you know, we were able to provide health insurance for our employees that were full-time, but we didn't do anything for the part-time people. And I would suggest that many farmers have a hard time affording that, too. So I think with Hartford County having approximately 75% graduation rate and a 30% college readiness rate, you know, that there are a lot of people in Hartford County that need these kind of jobs. So I'm all for the best, highest use of the property, and Chesapeake Real Estate has said that they're willing to work with the county to select users for the property, to target the types of users that the county wants. So I don't think that this needs to be an adversarial process. I think that everybody can work together, and the bill is really unnecessary in the spirit of cooperation. This is just... It is an affront to our property rights, and, you know, we've had property taken during World War II, during World War I from BG&E and the Chesapeake Bay. So, you know, we've... We really appreciate property rights. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mary Lee Stritch, followed by Andy Stansfield.
Mary Lee Stritch.
Good evening, I'm sorry. Good evening, ma'am.
3814 Federal Lane, 7/10 of a mile from Abingdon Woods. Okay, I've cut mine down like everyone else. Why hasn't a warehouse moratorium bill like Bill 23-005 been put into effect in the past to protect the quality of life of the citizens of Hartford County? The Abingdon Woods property had its zoning changed from residential to commercial industrial in 1982. It is in the middle of residential developments. It is adjacent to Old Post Elementary School and the historic St. Francis de Sales Catholic Church. Mega-million-square-feet distribution centers should not be allowed in residential areas. The nonstop caravan of tractor-trailers 24/7 will constantly expose area residents, students at Old Post Elementary, and parishioners at St. Francis de Sales to carcinogenic particulates from diesel fuel. The traffic along Routes 24, 924, 7, and Abingdon Road will get worse, and it is already horrendous. The non-title wetlands, the Ha Ha Branch, Otter Point Creek, the Bush River, and the Chesapeake Bay watersheds are in imminent danger of additional pollution. In 1982, when the zoning for Abingdon Woods was changed from residential, no such monstrosities as the 2.4 million square feet of warehouses existed anywhere, let alone smack dab in the middle of residential developments and in areas that are environmentally significant and endangered. I encourage the county council members to pass Bill 23-005. A moratorium on warehouses is long overdue. Last year, another warehouse moratorium, Bill 22-003, seemed like it was being supported by the county council. Then the previous county executive vetoed it. This time around, County Executive Cassely supports the moratorium bill. It is imperative that the county council likewise support it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Andy Stansfield, 3445A Box Hill Corporate Center Drive. I would like to thank the council for the opportunity tonight to have this here. Communities thrive with business, and business thrives with communities. Communities and businesses are a symbiotic relationship. Job generation, whether it be through engineering or construction jobs, permanent jobs at the facilities that are built, can generate income from tax revenue, income tax, and real estate I would like to focus on a point with this moratorium. I have the benefit of having worked here in Hartford County for 20 years, and I also have the benefit of working across the state of Maryland. And I've enjoyed for a long time the opportunity to work across the state and hear that areas like Hartford County are doing well and businesses are thriving. I feared that this moratorium will send a message that businesses are not welcome and that businesses and employers will not want to come and invest in Hartford County by such a moratorium. I urge you to vote no on Bill 23-005. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Brendan Patton, followed by Kate McDonald.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Brendan Patton, 2054 Park Beach Drive. Mr. Cassely was right on when he talked about economic development, the proper way to do economic development. If you think mega warehouses and freight terminals are positive economic development, I question your knowledge of economics. Destroying productive farmlands and forests, clogging roads with trucks, reducing property values of thousands of homes, all in exchange for low-paying hourly jobs, is not economic development. The tax money lost when you reduce people's property values is only... It's going to be an even... An even split with the tax money generated by mega warehouses. So there's no gain in tax money there. Over the past decade, mega warehouses have been built in Perryman, yet the poverty rate in Perryman has gotten worse and is now at 25.2%, more than double the poverty rate in all of Maryland. That doesn't sound like positive economic development. Aberdeen Proving Ground is the economic engine that powers Hartford County. Clogging the roads and reducing the quality of life around APG will damage our most important economic asset. We should be focusing on careers, not hourly jobs, for our economic development. Careers in science, technology, engineering, math, all which support APG and the technology sector, that should be our priority. What little land we have left in Southern Hartford County should be conserved or carefully developed in support of businesses which will train and employ people in high-paying careers. That would be true economic development. In closing, I'd like to ask you to vote in favor of Bill 23-005. If you vote against the bill, it'll send a message loud and clear to your constituents and to everyone in this county that you side with out-of-town developers before you side with your constituents. Thank you.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Kate McDonald, 2100 Park Beach Drive. I'm here in support of Bill 23-005. These are the numbers for Maryland according to the Clean Air Task Force: Death by Dirty Diesel. Maryland is already in the 86th percentile for the highest impact for diesel fuel in the country, and it gets worse as you travel up 95 to Hartford County. We rank eighth out of 49 states for cancer risk associated with diesel soot. For 2023, there are 186 projected diesel pollution deaths, 73 heart attacks, 115 cases of acute bronchitis, and over 4,000 cases of upper respiratory diseases, including severe asthma for children. The monetary cost is also high for our state and county. It's protected at $2,005,000, $105 million in Hartford County alone for health damages solely related to the increased pollution created by diesel truck traffic. And now the county's considering approving one of the largest freight distribution centers in the country, right in the middle of our neighborhood, bringing an additional 2,824 trucks already to an already dangerous and deadly situation. Don't let the Baltimore developers scare you and turn our beautiful county into a poisonous, toxic inland empire like seen in California and Pennsylvania. Just to address a few issues, if a moratorium on a farm brewery is an emergency and legal, this is an emergency and legal. Secondly, we are not stopping anyone from buying the Mitchell property. Craig, you can buy that property tomorrow. Go ahead. Lastly, I can sympathize with the construction workers, but do you expect us to sell out our property values, our health, our safety, and our quality of life for a construction job or a construction contract? That's just unreasonable. Thank you.
Chip Riley, followed by Lee Maddox.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
It's good to see you up in the building.
Yes, it is. Thank you, buddy. Appreciate it. Chip Riley, 1911 Park Beach Drive, Perryman. I'm here tonight in strong support of Bill Number 23-005. I've been a part of Hartford County Fire and EMS system for my entire 63 years of life. As warehousing and industrial development continues to grow, but roads and infrastructure stay the same or get worse, response times suffer and grow. This is all because of higher volumes of truck and employee traffic. Fire chief from Abingdon Fire Company for more than 25 years told me he is so frustrated with the traffic that exists now hampers response times. He told me he has given up trying to explain to county officials how dangerous the traffic in existing infrastructure is, not only for the citizens, but to their emergency vehicle drivers. Past chief from Aberdeen Fire Company, Steve Hench, and current chief, both agree there are many issues now with response times in Perryman area. Both agree equipment coming from the Rogers Street Station to the far end of the Perryman Peninsula could take approximately 13 to 14 minutes during normal hours. Rush hour could take 16 to 18 minutes. With the addition of more warehousing and industrial development, the truck and employee traffic will even extend response times longer. Lastly, a handy past Hartford County executive said to me about 10 years ago. They said, quote, "Chip, the county roads and infrastructure are about 25 years behind schedule." See, I thought you build the infrastructure and roads first, then the development. Hartford County seems to build the development first, promised the roads and infrastructure, but they never come. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Lee Maddox, 1700 Church Point Court, Aberdeen. I'm a retired captain with the Maryland State Police, a practicing attorney, and a 25-year resident of Perryman. I offer my support for Bill 23-005 with the amendments proposed by the 3P Protect Perryman Peninsula Coalition. This evening, I want to address property rights relative to the moratorium. All property owners have certain rights, including the right to use and sell their property. However, these rights are not absolute, and they must be balanced against the broader public interest and the rights of other impacted property owners. In other words, the principles of nuisance and quiet enjoyment are always running in the background. It is worth noting that mega warehouse development, freight terminals, is not the only viable use for a small number of properties to be covered by this temporary moratorium. There are a variety of alternative uses that would provide... that would provide economic benefits to the property owner and the community without the adverse impacts of the mega warehouses and freight terminals. These alternatives could include public open spaces, the harvesting of crops, and many other community-based, supported causes, uses. Turning now to the Fifth Amendment. The Fifth Amendment taking clause, it is important to recognize that the government has a legitimate interest in regulating land use to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. This interest extends to regulating the size, location, and intensity of developing projects that can have significant impacts on the surrounding areas. The public interest must be prioritized over individual property rights, and the government has a duty to regulate land use in a way that protects the health, safety, and welfare of all its citizens. And in terms of the vested conversation we had a minute ago, I believe the standard is permits, shovels in the ground, and improvements made in good faith reliance on the government. So if you know you're doing something illegal, like a freight terminal in LI, you can't do it, and you don't get vested, ever. Thank you for your time.
Bob Lynch, followed by Leslie Stein.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening, Council President Vincenti. My name is Robert Lynch. I'm an attorney with the law firm Stark &amp; Keenan, and I'm here this evening speaking on behalf of Chesapeake. And I'd also like to acknowledge all the other members of the council and County Executive Cassely who had notes here this evening. I'm going to jump right to my conclusion because I know there's only a couple of minutes. And so without setting up the beginning of the basis, I'm just going to hit the conclusion, which this bill is illegal. This council has been advised that Bill 23005 is illegal and should be defeated. The council's own outside attorney so advised the county council last year on these very same issues as represented in this proposed moratorium bill. The language has been tweaked, but still the same fundamental illegality. County Executive Glassman has mentioned earlier, he made it abundantly clear to the county council that instituting a temporary moratorium is illegal. This bill is a flagrant attempt to disrupt the development process which has been established by law through the master plan, through the zoning code, and through the subdivision regulations. It is unconstitutional special legislation to stop development of a project which by its right is allowed as a principal permitted use in the current LI zone. The substance and practical effect of the legislation is to burden the Mitchell property development by freezing the permit process as it moves forward to its final round of approvals. The enactment of this unconstitutional legislation will result in extraordinary economic damage to my clients. Chesapeake has spent the last two years carefully working through the county's prescribed development process as set forth in the law. They have invested more than $2 million in following requirements imposed by the law. They have relied on the law. If this legislation is enacted, Chesapeake will have no alternative but to seek immediate redress in the courts, including seeking personal capacity liability on the part of officials who are acting under the color of law to deprive Chesapeake of its property rights
Thank you, Mr. Lynch.
and its reasonable investment back expectation. Thank you, President.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good evening, council members. My name is Leslie Stein. I live at 810 Fairwind Drive, Bel Air. I am a citizen of Hartford County, born and raised, and I am for the Bill Number 23-005. As many of you may have known me, I did live in Miami for many years, and waterfront property is not property that you develop with warehouses. It's property that can drive tourism. It could drive economic growth. And I believe that the county needs to look at what actual economic impact this will have by putting warehouses versus other developments, such as Copper Mine, which is sports tourism, the Discovery Center at Waters Edge, which is going to bring 5 million people here to the county. That's more revenue than a warehouse. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Brittany Russell, followed by Craig Rodano.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Brittany Russell. I live at 1828 Park Beach Drive. I'm here in support of Bill 23005 with amendments proposed by the Protect Perryman Coalition. Mr. Pennman, this evening, we clearly heard your opposition to this bill. And tonight, I'm going to ask you to consider a different point of view. Perryman bears the brunt of the disparate impact of the warehousing industry as well as the freight terminal industry, where your district, District B, has no warehouses that are larger than 20,000 square feet. This moratorium allows us to reevaluate plans and codes to better serve Hartford County and its residents. Mr. Pennman, you asked Mr. Cassely several times if warehouses were a concern in 2016. Well, many things have changed since 2016. For example, the Washington Commanders were then called the Washington Redskins. In 2016, since 2016, many Hartford County schools have changed their names due to their ties with slavery. And the Bel Air Wegmans no longer uses plastic grocery bags because now we have learned of their impact on the environment. So as we learn more, we must do better. Hartford County must do better. Mr. Pennman, you don't think that this is an emergency, but I wonder if the roads that you and your family drive on, if they were slated to have an increase of over 1,000 tractor-trailers per day, if you would think that was an emergency, as residents of District F do. Mr. Pennman, I believe you should recuse yourself from voting on this moratorium because of the clear conflict of interest. Your campaign manager, Joe Snee, represents developers with a vested financial interest in the outcome of this bill. It's essential that our elected officials prioritize the county's interests and not personal relationships or political connections. Mr. Pennman, please reconsider and recuse yourself. Thank you.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Craig Rodano, 3445 Box Hill Corporate Center Drive. I'm a geologist and vice president of GeoTechnology Associates located in Abingdon. Been a Hartford County resident since 1968. I'm opposed to the moratorium as proposed in Bill 23005. A moratorium does nothing more than kick this down the road. We have the means to make adjustments as we see fit through legislation, and I think it's a waste to take a six-month moratorium. I'm going to jump around here a little bit. Looking back at Councilman Pennman's question earlier, the legislation indicates that, quote-unquote, "large warehouse facilities provide little in the way of jobs and meaningful economic growth." When I was reviewing the approved 2023 budget in brief, it indicated that three of the top 10 employers in Hartford County as of last year were distribution facilities totaling 3,100 employees, and that's just three facilities. Another follow-up to Councilman Pennman on the Perryman Well Field, there's not enough time to dive into the details of this, but there were two extensive studies, one by the Maryland Geological Society, another by MDE, both in the late '80s. I can tell you, being a geologist, nothing changes geotechnically in 20 years, maybe 20 million years. So there, a lot of work's been done. It would have to be reviewed, but it's no reason to be shutting things down. I'm down to my final seconds, but again, I'm opposed to this bill as structured. And by the way, my first job was a box stacker, and I was pretty darn good at it.
Thank you, sir.
Sherri Davis Cole, followed by Brad Stover.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Yep, good evening. My name is Cheryl Cole. I live on Park Beach Drive. So I'm here today in support of the moratorium with the amendments submitted by the 3P Coalition. Just wanted you guys to know, there's over 1,000 residents that live in the Perryman Peninsula, 500-plus houses. Our growing concerns are regarding the adverse health effects of air pollution, light pollution, and noise pollution. Air pollution is the presence of an introduction into the air of substances which are harmful or poisonous. Some of the things that we're concerned about is all the vehicles and the diesel exhaust. They can cause lung diseases and worsening conditions like asthma and chronic bronchitis. Common chemicals found in industrial warehousing are benzene, nitrogen oxide, carbon monoxide, and ozone, which are all very harmful. Light pollution, brightening of the night sky caused by streetlights and man-made sources. If you've ever driven back in the Perryman Peninsula at night and look over at the current warehouses, the whole sky is lit up. And I think that affects, studies have shown how that affects our neighbors looking directly into the lights. If you think about some of the warehouse proposal location, we'll have the tractor-trailer lights looking straight into people's neighborhoods, which I think is not a smart thing for us to do. And then our noise pollution is very harmful, annoying levels. Exposures to noise pollution has caused a rise in blood pressure, hypertension, and there's a bunch of other ones, cardiovascular, et cetera. But if you just think about a car, their comparison of a car, excuse me, decibels is 62 decibels. A tractor-trailer loaded is 85 decibels. So heavy trucks will have the equivalent of over 32 automobiles. And just think, back in our neighborhood, we'll have an additional 2,800 tractor-trailers driving our roads into our neighborhoods. Thank you for your time tonight, and please vote yes for the moratorium.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir.
Mr. President, Bradley R. Stover. My home address is 1208 Wishengwell Court, Bel Air, Maryland. I'm here tonight on behalf of Johnson Development Associates in opposition to the bill as is currently drafted. The reason for the opposition is this. As the bill is drafted, there's no provision for exempting a warehouse development that has gone through the approval process and obtained site plan, preliminary plan, and construction plan approvals from the county. That's exactly what Johnson Development has done at its proposed warehouse location at the end of Technology Drive. And I suspect a large reason for that is that the fact that there's been no public opposition thus far to the Johnson Development project is this particular project is not located in close proximity with any residential developments. It's located in close proximity with signalization that leads directly to I-95. However, the passage of this legislation as drafted would put a halt to Johnson Development's ability to obtain the final permits it needs to proceed with development of its project. As we also know from the legislation, references made to changes potentially in the zoning code and the subdivision regulations, that is certainly a harbinger of things to come. And if the zoning code is changed, it could have a very negative impact on Johnson Development and preclude it from being able to develop its property for which it has obtained site plan, preliminary plan, and construction drawing approval. Essentially, if Johnson Development, who played by the rules that was put before and went through the process without any opposition from the community, if this bill is passed, its ability to use its property for which it's permitted would be taken. So for that reason, Mr. President, members of the council, my client would advocate strongly for amendments to the bill which would ameliorate the harm that it would suffer by virtue of the fact that it has site plan, preliminary plan, and construction drawing approval without opposition from the community, largely, I believe, because of where it is located in the county, having no impact on any residential nearby development. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Carrie Cook, followed by Greg Pisano.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Carrie Cook, 2132 Perryman Road. Good evening, President Vincenti and council members. I certainly hope you all are well and your families. As a resident of the Perryman Peninsula and a member of the 3P group, it is clear that our community cannot withstand any more large-scale warehouse development causing harm and destruction. Therefore, I support the mega warehouse bill 23005. As a resident of the peninsula, we are a community. We are a community of people. These people, we spend countless hours raising awareness and providing proof, solid proof, that mega warehouses do not belong on the Perryman Peninsula. The water pollution, the air pollution, the threat to wildlife, the traffic dangers, the congestion, the trash along the roads that we clean up daily from people who don't live in our neighborhoods. All of these do not belong in a neighborhood. This is farmland, and this current farmland is in a neighborhood. Warehousing does not belong here. I want to speak about this community, the real life of Perryman. It is a community that deserves to be saved from these warehouses. And do you know why? I'm going to give you just one more reason. Because we are all of your constituents. We're all of yours. Because the future of the Perryman Peninsula impacts all of Hartford County. The 30% water distribution throughout the county only scratches the surface of what the impact the constituents in your districts will have to deal with. These are the people who elected you to act in their best interest, and risking their health and our health is not in anyone's best interest. The community of Perryman is the salt of the earth. This expression means they are good, honest, kind, and reliable people. These are people who work throughout Hartford County to protect the environment, to feed the hungry, to educate the children, and just simply work hard. We are a community that watches out for each other. We have each other's back, so to speak. If there's a need, this community shows up. We are strong of character. We don't give up. We don't walk away. We don't lose hope. We just want what is good, honest, true, kind, and reliable. Thank you for supporting us.
Thank you.
Greg Pisano, 1826 Park Beach Drive. I'm in favor of the bill. According to the most recent census data, Perryman has a diverse population with African-Americans representing double the percentage of Hartford County. The average income in Perryman is significantly lower than the county average, with 18% of the Perryman families living in poverty. That's twice that of Hartford County. Perryman is ranked the fourth poorest community in Hartford County. The household income on the peninsula is 36% below the counties. These statistics highlight the disproportionate impact of industrial development on low-income communities and communities of color, which is an issue of environmental injustice. I want to make clear that the 3P Steering Committee, which I'm part of, represents all the people of Perryman. And we understand that many of the residents don't have means to come up here and speak about industrial development, and that's where we come in. We are here to protect our entire community from noise pollution, air pollution, light pollution, water pollution through showing up and pleading our case week to week. The Perryman community is a true microcosm of, true microcosm, with Section 8 housing, small, single-family homes, two-trailer parks, townhouses, and homes on the Bush River. We are asking for a moratorium on a warehouse development to prevent additional tractor-trailers on residential streets, non-resident commuter vehicles speeding down Spessusha, Perryman, and Chelsea Roads, and shift changes, and other detrimental impacts on our community. A few Tuesdays ago, a lawyer for the developer for the annexed property near Bully Rock and Havity Grace said, "This property is surrounded by residential. Nobody wants commercial property in the middle of a residential community. We are asking from the council to employ common sense and protect our community from further industrial development." Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Holly McComas, followed by Ron Stucinski.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. President. Holly McComas, 1826 Park Beach Drive, Perryman. I am here today to express my strong support for Bill Number 23-005 with the amendments offered by 3P. As a resident of Perryman, I have witnessed the impact of industrial development firsthand. The current infrastructure- The current infrastructure does not support the current traffic in Perryman. This was reinforced most recently at the Town Hall conducted at the Southern Precinct in Edgewood when law enforcement reported they cannot enforce the laws due to inadequate infrastructure. This weekend, we had a fundraiser for Extreme Family Outreach at the Richland Ballroom. Hours before the event, Richland Ballroom had to have a tractor-trailer rig towed from the parking lot because the driver left it there and went to Vermont. We did a traffic safety survey, which proves, this is not just my opinion, 93% of those surveyed do not feel safe driving on the roads in Perryman. 97% have changed their driving habits. 69% do not feel the traffic circle at Old Philadelphia Road and Perryman Road can handle the current traffic now. 94% have trouble yielding from Spisushia onto Perryman. 95% have difficulties making a left turn onto Spisushia from Perryman. 68% think Hanning House Road is not wide enough for the current traffic, but we don't want anything done with that because that actually slows traffic down, and we think that's a good thing. 85% of the people think the bridge on Clubhouse Road connecting Perryman Lake Preserve to the Bush River is not safe. 96% of the intersection of, think the intersection of Woodley Road and East Michaelsville is not safe. It's no wonder some people don't want to visit us on the peninsula. Hartford County cannot keep building with only promises of upgrading infrastructure. It must address the infrastructure before adding more traffic to it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Ron Stucinski, 319 Marina Avenue, Perryman Peninsula. Almost a year ago to the day, and here we are again, at a moratorium hearing to save Hartford County communities from more unwanted, unneeded, unsafe, and illegal development. The swift actions by our current county executive with this moratorium shows how real leadership works in our county and will quickly show where current council members stand in the county. For the record, the last source water assessment study done in our wellfields was done in 2000, which was 23 years ago. The Perryman wellheads are the largest source of groundwater in Hartford County. There's no excuse for current up-to-date studies not to be done. And let's not forget when Mr. Jerry Powell or Frederick Ward at the DAC meeting was asked about diesel. He was asked, "How will you reduce harmful diesel exhaust? What is your plan for that?" Mr. Powell's response, "There is no plan." That's what he, there's no plan for the residents and the communities. None of these engineers, developers, attorneys, great Hartford committee members here today care about the negative results of the projects in our communities and county. None of them do. It's all about money. And not one of them live along south, live along or south of Route 40, not a one of them. So don't sit here, tell me and my resident neighbors what's right for our community and the county. Funny, the mission statement for the Greater Hartford Committee is, "Ensuring Hartford grows economically in a smart and responsible manner." So let me ask, when does that mission start? I would ask him, but he left, because that's what they do. They come here, they give their little speeches, and they walk out. Such a scam. Oh, and don't forget, Joe Snee is also a director on the board of the Greater Hartford Committee. Joe Snee was also Mr. Pennman's campaign manager, and Barry Glassman also, if I'm correct, put you on the Development Committee or whatever he did while he was still here. And I don't want to hear anything else about business will not come here. Businesses are here. Over 30% or so of our warehousing in our area is vacant, and it's not high-paying jobs people want to do for the rest of their lives. So let's just cut the bull. Cut the bull. Pennman, you're not a lawyer, and you say you're not a math major, then what are you besides reading what Joe Snee tells you to read? That's where I'm at right now.
Amy DePietro, followed by Nancy Post.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Amy DePietro, 3445 A, Box Hill Course, Port Center Drive. I am here tonight to talk to you about my concerns with the proposed moratorium. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I did want to start by thanking you for our service to our community. I too know what it's like to have a group of angry people and presenting to them, so thank you for your service. I'm a civil engineer with Morrison Ritchie Associates. Morrison Ritchie Associates has been providing civil engineering, surveying, architectural services here in Hartford County since 1979. In fact, we were founded here in Hartford County. In our business, moratorium is a four-letter word. Chief among my concerns with the proposed moratorium is the reduced confidence in the business environment in Hartford County. There's a certain amount of risk that businesses, investors, and developers are willing to take, but at a minimum, they are looking for stability and consistent application of the zoning ordinance. If enacted, this moratorium will cause reputational damage to the business climate that will be difficult to correct. Second among my concerns is the impact to our business and overall real estate and construction industry, which includes contractors, all of their subs, attorneys, accountants, scientists, lenders, brokers, landscapers, title companies, insurance companies, et cetera. I just want to get a quick show of hands of people that have worked on a warehouse project in the room, please. Thank you. Finally, I don't understand why there needs to be a moratorium. If you want to change the zoning ordinance, put forth legislation to do so. The moratorium as currently written with no vesting or grandfathering clause disregards the long-established zoning regulations that our industry relies upon when making business decisions. Thank you for listening, and I urge you to vote no to Bill 23005. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am.
Nancy Post, 411 Green Tree Circle, Abingdon. I support the warehouse moratorium. Many mistakes were made in the past regarding Hartford land use, likely due to personal agendas. It is beyond comprehension that Hartford government permitted the building of mega warehouses and related infrastructure among residential neighborhoods while allowing the permanent destruction of at least 200 out of 326 acres of forested wetlands known as Abingdon Woods. This endangers the Haha Branch stream that fully traverses the property, which drains into the sensitive Otter Point Creek estuary a mile downstream. Per the Abingdon site plan, the structures that will replace the permeable forested wetlands will include four warehouses totaling over 2 million square feet despite existing vacant warehouse space in Hartford, new roads including a major road over the sensitive Haha Branch stream, which will introduce pollutants into the stream and the OPC estuary, parking spaces for 1,752 cars, 97 trucks, and 314 trailer drops. Rush hour already clogs our southern Hartford roads. This will create a nightmare for residents and commuters. We do not want our neighborhood roads turned into highways to accommodate this poor planning. A traffic engineer called the developer's traffic study a sham at a past council meeting. Hartford's February 2022 letter to the developer shows the negative impact the newly introduced heavy traffic will have on southern Hartford roads by requiring an extra Route 24 northbound lane, Route 24 intersection changes at Edgewood Road and Route 7, widening roads at Route 7 intersections at Abingdon Road and Route 136, extending Edgewood Road to Abingdon Road, and construction at Abingdon Road and Laurel Bush Road. This adds more impervious surface in southern Hartford and a very large increase in vehicular congestion and pollution. This destruction will also reduce our home values. The developer's studies amount to writing biased position papers to support their destruction of our communities, which includes an anemic environmental mitigation plan that demonstrates their total lack of concern for Hartford's natural environment.
Please bring your comments to a close, Ms. Post.
I'd appreciate all, any of you who received campaign contributions from people associated with these projects to recuse yourselves from the vote.
Thank you, ma'am.
Jacqueline Delisle, followed by Tim Van Endem.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Jacqueline Delisle, 200 South Main Street, Bel Air, Maryland.
Ms. Delisle, can you step up closer to the microphone, please?
Thank you, sir. I'm here this evening opposing Bill 23005 as currently drafted. This legislation is accompanied by a physical note which states that it is not possible to establish an economic impact for the proposed bill. The only economic comments have been offered by its proponents, quote, "Livelihoods will be affected," end quote. This bill has been described by its supporters as pausing mega warehouses. The bill, however, is a total ban. There is no allowance or exceptions based on size, location, square footage, zoning of the project, or whether the project would be located in an area for redevelopment of an existing business park. The bill as proposed does not distinguish between new projects and projects such as described by Mr. Stover as those well along in the approval process. It provides no grandfathering whatsoever. The bill as proposed does not distinguish between redevelopment and new development. Projects located within existing businesses and industrial parks, some constructed over 20 years ago with existing road networks, water and sewer, and stormwater management facilities already on-site, will not be permitted to be redeveloped for any of the itemized uses, and the property owners of those properties will not be permitted to move forward with either sales or redevelopment of those properties. And these are not the only adverse impacts. Even existing property owners of those properties currently zoned to permit warehouses or even improved by warehouses will face the uncertainty of valuation of those properties. Their ability to sell, mortgage, and in some cases, even the ability to continue to pay those mortgages will be placed in jeopardy. For some families, ownership of these properties represents a lifelong investment. That investment will be a limbo for a minimum period of the duration of the moratorium, even assuming it will not be extended. The economic uncertainty caused by the inability to sell properties will ripple through the tax assessment system. After all, how can a property be correctly assessed when its very use or its possible use has been prohibited by a legislative act?
Thank you, Ms. Delisle.
I urge you to consider amendments to the bill as proposed to address these exceptions. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Tim Van Endem. I live at 1963 Mitchell Drive. That's in Perryman. Before I get too deep into this, Council President, I'd like some clarification from you. When you ask for address, are you asking for home address or business address?
I'm asking for an address, and we hope it's a home address.
Can we put in writing that it needs to be a home address versus a business?
We'll take care of it, mister.
Thank you.
We'll take care of it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Pennman, you're talking a couple million dollars, which Mr. Castley referred to as chump change in taxable income based on the property and everything. Let's talk about the $102 million in lost evaluation of the 700-plus homes in Perryman alone, that you're never going to get that back. That equates to over $1 million a year in perpetuity. We will never see that money again. It's gone. Maybe it should come out of the sheriff's budget. Maybe you don't, maybe he doesn't get the K-9 units. Maybe it should come out of public housing. I don't know. That would be up for you guys, but seeing as how we're trying to run on financial stability, it makes sense to try to not lose money in the process of making money. The comments that I've heard regarding the legality of this, first off, Hartford County has established precedent that moratoriums are legal. Mr. G. N. G. Ordano, Council President, you both voted for one. That would be the Farmhouse Brewery, which, Councilman, or, excuse me, County Executive Glassman signed off and approved. This established precedent that moratoriums are legal, and at the end of the day, the county reserves the right to stop issuing permits. I don't understand why we're arguing it's a violation of the Fifth Amendment when nobody's saying you can't sell your property, you just can't use this particular thing for X amount of time, because there's already legality questions. But as we've said, and has been brought up, nuisance laws are a thing. So is the right to peaceful enjoyment, which the Maryland State Supreme Court has affirmed, and nuisance laws are why this county is currently a name defendant in an active lawsuit. As for the threats of lawsuit, I didn't realize we governed by threats. That's very nice, sir. I'll come into your county and threaten your council.
Alan Swetman, followed by Monica McHale.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm Alan Swetman. I'm wearing a tie, but I'm not an attorney.
Can I have your address, please?
826 Country Club Road, Havity Grace. But I'm here on behalf of Friends of Hartford, and their address is P.O. Box 294, Abingdon, Maryland 21009, and with a website of friendsofharford.com. Friends of Hartford is in support of this bill and does support a six-month moratorium on warehouse construction. A lot of good points have been made tonight. I would personally question why we would build warehouses when so many existing warehouses are empty or poorly occupied. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Monica McHale, 2103 Wyndham Court, Bel Air, Maryland 21015. Greetings, Council President, Councilwoman, Councilmen, and fellow community members, as well as legal councils. My major concern is the impact we are having on our environment and wildlife due to the changes in natural habitats. There are two warehouse projects that are deeply concerning to me: The nearly 326 acres of Abingdon Woods located between Abingdon Road along Route 24 and Philadelphia Road between them, and which there was a petition that was signed on change.org by 17,503 people wishing to save Abingdon Woods from being developed, and the Perryman Peninsula project. Both of these are very proximal to the Chesapeake Bay and house lots of small mammals and wildlife. As one major project was found to have an invalid forest conservation plan permit, as a result of the plan, it begs the question how many FCP permits may also be invalid. Upon further research, the answer is several. I would like to propose that this Hartford County Council work with the Maryland Department of Natural Resources to provide oversight to both the Director of Planning and Zoning and that department. This oversight is needed regarding the legality of the forest conservation plan permits for all current projects in our county to ensure that we follow state guidelines in accordance with the Maryland Forest Conservation Act. According to our county code, FCP approval must be made, again, by the Director of Zoning and Planning, and the FCP on multiple projects was not made by the Director of Zoning and Planning. It was made by the Chief of Developmental Review of the County's Department of Zoning and Planning. Only development decisions of the Director of Planning are final decisions that may be appealed pursuant to a petition for judicial review as per Hartford County Code HCC 20268-28. When a waiver is issued regarding the removal of specimen trees to the forest conservation plan, that waiver must also be issued by the Director of Zoning and Planning and not the chief, as per Hartford County Code 267-39D, this was not done. Please revoke the permits and consider our safety for our communities and wildlife. Thank you.
Eleanor Dutter, followed by Glenn Dutter.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Eleanor Dutter, 1806 Park Beach Drive on the shores of the Bush River. House has been there for 99 years as of this July. Our family has enjoyed the beautiful peninsula we had, and now it's just being destroyed. As I have learned more about this proposed Mitchell mega freight distribution center and warehouse project, I've become even more aware of the problems associated with it. My background is a health and physical education teacher and as a first responder is probably why my attention was drawn to the air pollution problem. That, because no one else seems to care. The miasma of fumes and fine particulate matter in diesel exhaust causes serious health problems like my asthma and especially lung cancer. This problem can be avoided This problem can be avoided locally by not allowing over 3,000 more big rigs operating 24/7 into our area surrounded by residential communities. There are ways to reduce these health hazards. These methods are costly, and the current and future commercial interests do not or will not want to pay for them. They want the residents to pay the costs with their health and safety. That is why the Mitchell mega freight distribution center project requires more time for more studies and perhaps changes in the county code and regulations to make the people who profit most bear the cost of making it safer for the residents. Vote yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Glenn Dutter, 1806 Park Beach Drive, Aberdeen. I will send you my prepared comments for tonight via mail, but there's some things I just have to say now. First off, number one, I helped Mary Ann Lasante, Councilperson Mary Ann Lasante, write the Perryman Well Field Protection Act, primarily to protect against contamination. We never, ever imagined tens of millions of impervious surfaces restricting groundwater recharge and affecting possibly water supply. Second, is there an emergency? At the proposed Abingdon Business Park, land has been cleared, forests cut, wetlands and streams buried. As a result, the water draining from the area has gone from clear to salty, and nitrogen has gone from five parts per million, which is normal, to over 20 parts per million, abnormal. This detrimentally affects commercial and recreational fisheries, works as worth millions, water-based recreation, other water-based recreation such as boating. This is worth billions. Tourism industry, I don't even know what that's worth. But it also affects water quality that can become unhealthy and dangerous, even fatal. If you want to talk about poisonous algae blooms and flesh-eating bacteria, I'll be glad to do that at another time. If I may, number three, if I may unelegantly paraphrase Ms. Maddox, where in the Constitution does it say that a landowner has the right to use his land in a way that harms his neighbors and his community? And where in the Constitution does it say that the government cannot act to prevent such harmful results? Please vote for the moratorium. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Cindy Mayer, followed by Emma Peller.
Good evening, ma'am. Name an address, please.
Good evening. Cindy Mayer, and 335 Patterson Mill Road, Bel Air, Maryland. I'm here in support of the moratorium. I moved to Harford County 20 years ago, and I didn't move here for the warehouses. I moved here because I was attracted to the laid-back rural small-town appeal of the area. And since that time, the green spaces have been disappearing, the wildlife habitats have been disappearing, and air pollution, noise pollution, runoff, deforestation, industrial noise, apartment complexes, warehouses, they've all been increasing. Frankly, the county has a lot less appeal. What's the county going to look like 20 years from now? What are you going to do to attract people to this county? I think the number-one thing that the council can do moving forward is to think about what can we do to improve the quality of life in this county? And that is going to take at least six months of serious reflection.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Emma Peller, 1447 Redfield Road in Bel Air. Thank you for the short opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm here to ask you to vote to pass Bill 23005. On behalf of Harford County Climate Action, I wanted to bring your attention to our petition in favor of this bill. We received over 350 signatures in support, the vast majority from residents within Harford County. You all received a copy of a list of all the signatures as well as a separate list of the signatures from your specific district in your email this afternoon. I would like to share some of the comments from those who signed. One signer in District F writes, "Please stop the madness. We already have too many warehouses in South Harford County and all of the traffic issues that come with that kind of development." Another in District D says, "The code needs to address, in particular, the new type of mega warehouse that did not exist when the language was written. Your constituents need you to be proactive to protect quality of life and home values. Time and support of the council is needed to protect the quality of life in the residential communities these new mega projects will affect." There are many other comments from concerned citizens within the petition reports you have received, and I hope you'll take the time to read and consider them as you make your decision on this bill. On a personal note, I would like to bring up some of the same points I made to you about a year ago. I'm 20 years old, and I've grown up in a world forever damaged by climate change. It's an existential threat that hangs over my entire generation. The Harford County that I grew up in looks pretty different from the Harford County that you grew up in. I'm afraid to think about what the world will look like, what it will be like when my future children grow up if we do not take action today. The constituents of Harford County deserve to have their environment, their land, and their waters protected by you. Their children deserve to breathe fresh air as they walk home instead of diesel fumes from truck after truck. They deserve to drink fresh water without poisonous runoff from warehouse construction and operation. They deserve to grow up with what my generation hasn't had, hope that we may be able to turn this climate disaster around. You can help the residents of Harford County to push the needle towards us by starting with voting yes on Bill 23005. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Paul Filacci, followed by Delaney Mizan.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Paul Filacci, 320 Marina Avenue. When industrialization is concentrated in an area with lower-income households or higher population of minority households like the Perryman community, that is considered desperate impact and in violation of federally affirmative fair housing. Desperate impact is illegal and can affect current and past federal HUD community development block grants if Harford County doesn't take steps to overcome barriers to fair housing choice. They could have to pay back HUD block grants. In 2009, Westchester County in New York settled for $62 million for failing to meet its fair housing obligations. I would argue that the overconcentration of industrialization near these low-income and minority neighborhoods, including housing that use HUD funding, is putting the county at high risk, if not in violation of current federal HUD funding. A moratorium on future warehouses and mega distribution centers is not anti-business, it's just anti-warehouse and the lower-paying jobs, truck traffic, pollution, and other dangers associated with mega and high-intensity facilities. Business lawyers and councilmen that support changes to enterprise zones and zoning outside the normal zoning planning process, but then call it illegal when its homeowner and resident-supported moratorium legislation outside the normal zoning planning are just being hypocritical and self-serving, especially in a county with precedent of passing moratoriums over the last two years. Mission creep: military term when the original mission changes over time to an entirely different mission than when you started. Example: Afghanistan started with getting rid of one person, a few thousand troops, then 20 years later, over 100,000 troops, and 20 years later, we're not even sure what we're doing. In 1997, the light industrial zoning area, the classification for warehouse, described a building that was 25,000 square feet or smaller and store material for a month or more. 1.7 million square feet is mission creep. In Bel Air, the height of buildings in Bel Air are about six-story limit right now. If we had the similar at mission creep, there would be 48 stories at the mall, at the hospital, downtown Bel Air. Would we allow that kind of mission creep in Bel Air? No. So why do we allow it in the southern, south of Route 40? Thanks.
Good evening. Name an address, please.
Delaney Mizan, 1812 Park Beach Drive. As an environmental science major at Towson University, we discuss property rights. I sit in that classroom and attempt to see things from another perspective, the one that votes no to this moratorium on behalf of these property rights, but I simply cannot. We are connected to the environment. The environment is us. If you want to destroy the land, the habitats, pave it all gray. Sure, disguise the harm this will do by calling it one's property rights, but if you have your property rights, I have mine. We have ours. I have the right to breathe clean air on my property. I have the right to drink clean water on my property. Pollution does not stop at the site. Diesel engine emissions will seep into the ground and contaminate our drinking water and produce acid rain. Diesel exhaust will lead to serious health conditions such as asthma and respiratory illnesses. This is environmental injustice. You do not get to control my quality of air and water because of what you choose to do with your land. This is a fluid resource that you cannot control, harness, or contain. We will reap the consequences. Love thy neighbor. This proposed project does not. At least give this project the time it needs and consider the natural resources that will be ruined. I wrote my college essay on legacy. I used to think about my legacy, how I can make a difference. I suppose you all have as well. That's why you're councilmen, to enforce change for the better. So what legacy do you want to leave behind? What kind of example do you want to leave for the next generation, for my generation? This cannot be undone. Paved land cannot become saved land. Wildlife cannot come back. Water cannot be cleaned with a magic wand. The community cannot come back. Do not leave this mistake for the next generation to deal with. Do better. Leave a positive example, be an example. It has been the biggest highlight of my life to grow up on the Perryman Peninsula, and it would be a great shame if I was the last generation to do so.
Thank you.
Angie Lane, followed by William Graham.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Angie Lane, 319 Marina Avenue. I've been an HR director within the Route 40 corridor for the past 15 years. I have firsthand experience in the southern Harford County labor market. As a skilled labor manufacturer, we ended 2022 with 310 full-time employees. Last year, we hired 358 full-time people and had 345 terminations. We have plenty of jobs. The proposed development claims job creation, but there's no discussion on the jobs that will be abandoned for these new opportunities. First of all, the candidates these jobs attract do not want to work and call out frequently. Most don't even show up for interviews. Labor competition in this market is real, and up until recently, it felt healthy. Now, they job-hop for a few cents more, or if they just feel expectations are unreasonable, like showing up on time. Most don't have and aren't interested in the education or skill set for careers. When you try to establish expectations, they will quickly leave for the next option. Why? Because across the street is struggling with staffing just as much as we are. So standards continue to be lowered while wages go higher. New businesses considering Harford County should evaluate how the county treats existing businesses. I'm sure they appreciate due diligence, since in the future, they will become existing and be subjected to similar impacts. More buildings do not necessarily equate to successful growth. There is much value in the quality of life and the balance of culture, nature, and wellness. At least that's what the website says for the Harford County's Office of Economic Development. Please stand by what you claim to support and take time to determine the impact to existing businesses, safety, and the quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Will Graham, 2600 Cool Spring Road in Bel Air. I'm here speaking to support Bill 23005 with a few facts to relay. The 2020 Chesapeake Bay Foundation State of the Bay Report gave the Chesapeake Bay a health score of 32. That's a D-plus. That was down one point from the previous report of 2018. The 2022 report gave the bay the same score of 32, meaning that in the last five years, the health of our Chesapeake Bay has remained in a dismal state. Furthermore, last year, the 2022 blue crab survey determined that the Chesapeake Bay blue crab population is currently at its lowest number since scientists began regularly tracking blue crabs in 1990. That's the lowest population in 32 years, and this is following a three-year streak of below-average reproduction. So we are losing our blue crabs due to a polluted and sick bay. If you're concerned about keeping jobs in Harford County, you may want to start by looking at the crabbers that harvest these crabs. This report also states the following: Runoff from developed lands is now Maryland's second-largest pollution source, surpassing wastewater. New construction and lagging efforts to reduce pollution in established neighborhoods mean that this pollution source could further increase. Proposed permit renewals for local stormwater systems, construction activity, and industrial sites are insufficient to protect and restore water quality. There are options that can be applied to these lands that are being developed for warehouses. As you can see, we have a lot of citizens here who are taking time from their busy schedules to advocate for these options. Work with these citizens. Work with the groups who are fighting with everything we have to pursue these options. We have valuable input, and we can help turn these projects into something that will benefit all of our citizens and make Harford County a model to show other locales how to protect our natural environment. If we continue to go down this path of ever-increasing development, we will leave a broken county as our legacy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Margaret Huey, followed by Tammy Wainwright.
Good evening, ma'am.
I'm Margaret Huey. I'm 208 Branch Brook Court, Bel Air, Maryland. I attend St. Francis de Sales Church, and I drive on Route 24 several times a day. And I'm not looking forward to extra truck traffic, I guess, from Abingdon Woods. I feel like people get off of 95, especially when they want to turn left on 7, and they're swinging left fast, and it's hard now, and I can't imagine many more trucks. So I guess that's number one. I guess the loudness. I don't like destroying all, I mean, we're taking land that's undeveloped and developing it, whereas I feel that when you drive along 40, especially towards the Joppa area, there's lots of available, there's lots of available land. So I would prefer, instead of developing pristine areas, to reuse some brownfields if I had my choice. And also, I just say, I did say, when our county executive was running, that saying, looking at Cecil County, if you go up Cecil County along Route 40 and around Exit 100, if you look at the mega warehouses, they're just not pleasant to have around, to be near, to see. So anyway, so I am for the moratorium, and definitely people have said this better than me, but I'm saying it from my personal point of view, so thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Tammy Wainwright, 11th Vesucia Road. I am here today in support of the moratorium with the amendment submitted by 3P. Sacrifice Zone, the environment territory place of disposable lives as described by De Souza. Sacrifice Zone, a place where the words "economic development" and "progress" have replaced the words "Jim Crow, trailer trash." Words used to segregate, keep in our place. Vilify, it's dangerous, unsafe, Little Baltimore. And stigmatize, your life and well-being is worthless as a community. In 1917, a sacrifice zone was implemented in the Perryman community. The quality of life, the physical and mental health of our residents was deemed redundant. In other words, disposable. This has continued for over a century, separated from the rest of Harford County and enclosed along the Route 40 corridor by capitalists and government leaders who deem the Perryman area disposable, where the catchphrase "light industrial" is used for the purpose of profit and power with no care of the toll on human lives. We have seen a calculated disinvestment of resources and community recourse. Sacrifice Zone, where I, rise every morning, have to use two inhalers due to COPD and asthma, made worse daily by the pollution from diesel fumes and factory emissions. Sacrifice Zone.
Thank you, ma'am.
Stephen Preston, followed by Justin Dixon.
Good evening, sir.
Yes, good evening. Stephen Preston, 3707 Wolf Trail Drive, Abingdon, approximately one mile away from the northeast side of the remaining forested acres known as Abingdon Woods and five miles away from the intended mega warehouse development on the Mitchell Farm in Perryman Peninsula. away from the intended mega warehouse development on the Mitchell Farm in Perryman Peninsula. I'm here in support of Bill 23005. I'm also here to implore you, council members, to vote for that bill as well. I'd like to spend a few moments talking about who I work for. I'm employed by the USDA Forest Service. We have a motto. Motto is "Caring for Land and Serving People." The phrase "Caring for Land and Serving People" captures the Forest Service mission. As set forth in law, the mission is to achieve quality land management under the sustainable, multi-use management concept to meet the diverse needs of people. It includes many bullet points on this page. I'm just going to read the first one. Number one, advocating a conservation ethic in promoting the health, productivity, diversity, and beauty of forests and associated lands. Next, I'd like to talk about phrases in the actual bill itself, at least as introduced. Whereas the nature of and impact of modern warehousing facilities is significantly different than the zoning code could have anticipated for warehousing uses that are permitted by That is something evident, and in its own right, everyone can see. Whereas large warehouse facilities provide little in the way of jobs and meaningful economic growth and development for the local communities where such facilities are located. That means, yeah, what are meaningful jobs? Jobs that pay for somebody who is unskilled or semi-skilled? I guarantee you, any job development or job opportunities for those warehouses will be done remotely by white-collar workers in offices or in remote home offices.
Sir, bring your comments to a close.
Lastly, I believe it's morally wrong to allow facilitator-approved mega warehouses being built.
Sir, your time is up.
And in the spirit of the Forest Service motto, please care for the land and serve the people of Hartford County.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Justin Dixon, 300 North Union Avenue, Havittigay, Maryland. Ooh, a little too close. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to all of our elected officials. I know there's a pretty big task ahead of you guys, and I appreciate your consideration in all these matters, and also that I'm here tonight really just to kind of represent the local businesses and their employees that currently live here in the county and derive their, you know, existence from performing work on projects such as these. Thank you for the chance to come before you tonight to discuss the warehouse moratorium issue. It would be no secret that my colleagues and I are pro-business. Having made our living working for nearly 40 years in Hartford County in the construction industry, we're keenly aware of the moving parts that go into the building process. I'm here tonight to express our opposition to this moratorium. We find it too far-reaching and without merit or compromise, and retroactively impacts projects that have already passed all the qualifications that we put in place over many decades by this very governmental body and your predecessors. For those council members who may be steadfast in your commitment to this moratorium and those members who continue to seek progress, I would simply ask for compromise in the form of amendments. I know we can seek an amicable solution to future projects while providing security to those who have already invested a great deal of time, energy, and financial resources to their existing projects that have been halted. Let us not also forget the huge assembly of businesses much like ours that are attached to these projects and help to play a part in its planning and construction, from banking and legal, architectural firms, engineering firms, geotechnical, construction, material supply chain, landscapers, and a multitude of subcontractors and their employees, just to name a few. We all have a stake in this county's development, and we all derive a paycheck and living through the jobs that these projects create. I know that for a fact that most of our 400-plus DXI construction employees live, work, and pay taxes in Hartford County, and that most if not all the businesses I just listed will be impacted the same way when it comes to the jobs that we seek. The exceptionally large tax contribution alone from these businesses' employees to the county cannot go unmentioned. So in closing, please consider the root of compromise here tonight. We're all here to work together for the betterment of our county, and no matter your position on the matter of progress.
Thank you, sir.
Our work must continue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Pam DeMar, followed by Ara Vandenda Pillamari.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Thank you, council. I'm here tonight to ask the council to support the warehouse.
Give your name and address, ma'am.
Pam Deemer, 928 Bergen Court, Bel Air, Maryland.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm here to ask the council to support the warehouse moratorium, Bill 23005, which was introduced by County Exec, Executive Castley. I represent Hartford County Climate Action, and we agree that the county's zoning codes need to be updated, including a new industrial category for e-commerce development that uses mega warehouses. Also, the buffer requirement between these warehouses and residential areas need to be increased. We oppose any amendment, any amendment that would limit the applicability to Perryman Peninsula alone. A moratorium is a first step in addressing the human and environmental impacts from expanding industrial warehouse development. Comprehensive legislation at the state and county level is needed to regulate distribution centers to protect communities from their myriad of social costs. Without such plans, our county may continue to see declines in the quality of life, destruction of the environment, and erasure, erasure of its complex history. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
My name is Ara Vandenda Pillamari, 712 Shamrock Road. I am also a member of Hartford County Climate Action. Good evening, members of the council and members of the community. My heart especially goes out to our students, Emma and Delaney. Your words are going to stay with me for a very long time. Council members, you were entrusted to this office to protect our county. The number of times we have heard people raise the threat of legal action, is it self-proof that we need new zoning codes? And I urge you to pass the moratorium and use the six months to safeguard our county's future and update the zoning code to recognize the climate emergency and the urgent need to prioritize and protect our precious land, water, air, health, habitat for wildlife and pollinators, our forests. Consider one leaf. Does the leaf know, as it turns golden like the sun that made it green, as it falls to the ground to reunite with its source, as my feet press it into leaves pressed before, worm-eaten, rain-soaked, wind-withered, and twig-tattered to become earth, that it becomes instead land, contested over centuries, over zonal color hearings? Does the leaf know that it falls on stolen land that will be stolen again, converted to warehouses where the thieves will stash their loot? Does the leaf know that one day the tree that sent it forth may return in the form of so many boxes stacked in the warehouses, shipped across the land, impervious? Does the leaf know that leaves that came before nourished the ground that fed men who wield the pens that draw the lines and keep the score? Does the leaf know which district it is in, who its representative is?
Thank you, ma'am.
Stacy Stone, followed by John Malamo.
Good evening, council. My name is Stacy Stone. I'm a civil engineer living in Perryman, 10106 Park Beach Drive. Can I have a quick survey here? The number of people, if you have been adversely impacted by a warehouse and you're in this room, please raise your hand. When the existing 12.7 million square feet of industrial development warehouses, freight distribution centers, and Perryman were approved and built, the traffic to those facilities was vastly underestimated. Even though Hartford County road code requires developers to use the ITE rates, that is the Institute of Traffic Engineers rates, Hartford County provided a lesser rate to those developers. What that means is for those 12.7 million square feet, just over 1,000 vehicles per day were estimated to access. In reality, it's about 4,000 vehicles a day if you're using the current requirements. It shouldn't take a certain engineer living in Perryman to point that out, for that to come to light. Large freight distribution centers require connectivity to an aerial roadway, Route 40, through a major collector roadway, Maryland 159 or Perryman Road. So the Hartford County road code requires business districts to have a minimum of a 40-foot-wide roadway, that's two 12-foot lanes in each direction, minimum, aphid shoulders with curb and gutter and sidewalk. Neither Perryman Road nor Chelsea Road have this. That's because the developers that came in already were not required to put this in. So now it sits on my back, your back, state highway in Hartford County to fix this. So I'm asking you to support the amendments 3P proposes in this moratorium, and if anyone needs a construction job, please let me know. I have a ton of.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir.
Sir, good evening to you and your colleagues. I only have one address, much as Ms. Catherine Ann might like otherwise, she hasn't figured out how to move the house. Don P. Malamo, 2402 Eagleview Drive, Bel Air, Maryland. Quoting, "MRA has certain rights to use its property. However, it cannot use its property in derogation of the rights of other residents and of adjoining institutions to exist, thrive, and continue to contribute to their community without unnecessary adverse impact." Robert F. Cahoe, Jr., Zoning Board of Appeal Hearing Examiner, zoning case 5458. Residents on Perryman Peninsula have a right to the same consideration as accorded in zoning case 5458. The MRA was decided at the Supreme Court of Maryland, and they ruled and held that the property owner has no right to the zoning status. And construction has not started, therefore, the project is not vested, and so is without a right to continue. The U.S. Supreme Court declined to hear that case. Seems like the legal issues have been resolved. And I know that at each legislative session, you pray to God for wisdom, and I've often wondered, how does he communicate with you? Is he speaking tonight? Is it reasonable to ask God, to fault God for your mischief? I ask God to preserve the county from your mischief. Finally, God will not save a slovenly soldier. You must acquire a detailed knowledge of good zoning and land use practices for this task. If you do not do so, if you do not understand the concept of zoning, good land use practices, and applicable law, you will find no wisdom anywhere. This is on you, not on God.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening, Mr. President. Members of the council, Joseph F. Snee, Jr., 1322 Grafton Shop Road, Bel Air, 21014. Just by way of background, in February of 1954, on an emergency basis, the first zoning code was enacted in Hartford County. Three years later, in 1957, we had the first permanent code. Twenty years later, under the master land use plan that was adopted by the council, we established the development envelope for Hartford County. We said, this is where we're going to grow. It goes from Havittigay to Joppa Town, up 24 to Abingdon, Bel Air, and Forest Hill, all connected by water and sewer, and it's been in place for 46 years. All three major projects affected by this illegal moratorium, Abingdon Business, Mitchell Property, and Florida Rock, are in the growth envelope, connected with water and sewer, and represent nearly $1 billion in economic development for this county. The Director of Planning and Zoning was instrumental in updating the zoning code in December of 2008. It's not 1982, it's December 2008. The current Director was the principal author of the update to the land use plan, the so-called 2016 Next Plan. These are the rules that we abide by in the development community. Bill number 23005, one, seeks to derail the long-established development process, two, violates the Fifth Amendment, and three violates Article 3, Section 33 of the Maryland Constitution. All three affected properties are permitted as a matter of right. The enactment of this unconstitutional legislation will result in extraordinary damage to the county and Hartford County's development and economic development reputation. Thank you. It is bad legislation.
Thank you, sir.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
With no other speakers, this will conclude the public hearing on Bill 23-005. I would remind any of you that have written comments that you are not able to express fully, to please send them. We will take a look at them. Thank you for your patience. We're going to take a short recess. Good evening, Chair. Cause to order legislative session day 23-009. I would ask you to please join us for the pledge, followed by opening prayer by Councilman Riley.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being justice for
Please bow your heads. Lord, I want to thank you in advance for your strength and your energy that will sustain our days, your wisdom that will give us guidance, and your peace that will fill us. May this year continue to be filled with so many blessings, miracles, and answered prayers. And we ask all of this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Riley. Council, as you all know, Councilman Guthrie's not with us this evening, he's not feeling well, so best wishes to him. Speedy recovery. Agenda item number four, presentation proclamations, we have none. Five, consideration petitions, applications, appointments, and nominations. Executive appointments, Liquor Control Board may have a motion.
Council President, I move to approve James Walters and Steven Sins.
Sines, I believe.
Sines.
Yep. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. So it's been moved in second to approve the new appointments to the Liquor Control Board. Is there any discussion? Mr. Janjordano?
Is either one of the gentlemen here tonight?
I believe so.
Mr. Sines? Good evening, Mr. Sines. I wasn't sure if it was your address or Mr. James. One of them was a business address. Was that your address?
No, sir.
No, sir, okay. Well, I guess if James isn't here, I can't ask him that question then. But all right, thank you very much, sir.
Anyone else? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
No.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bullsodles?
Aye.
There being four votes in the affirmative, one vote in the negative, and one absent, the appointments are hereby approved. Thank you, sir. HVAC Mechanical Board may have a motion.
Council President, I move to approve the reappointments of Terry Artman, Kenneth Blevins, Richard Ford, Jr., Roger Wells, and Craig T. Robey.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. It's been moved in second to approve the reappointments. It's been moved and seconded to approve the reappointments to the HVAC Mechanical Board. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
There being five votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, the appointments are hereby approved. Is any of these individuals in the audience? Board of Electrical Examiners, may I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve the reappointments of Thomas Awalt, Thomas Murky, William Smith, James Wright, and a new appointment of James Swam.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Board of Electrical Examiner's appointments. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
There being five votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, one absent, the appointments are hereby approved. Towing Appeals Board, may I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve the reappointments of Roxanne Lynch, Wayne Sullivan, and the new appointments of Lieutenant Scott Blankenship, Joe Newcomb, and Aaron Brown.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Towing Appeals Board reappointments and new appointments. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
There being five votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, one absent, the appointments are hereby approved. Special presentations, counsel, it's a pleasure to have Tom Walls, Shane Grimm in for a presentation
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to sit down with you and bring you what this Miracle League is all about, since several of you are new to the board or to the council. I know Council President Vincenti knows a little bit about it because he was out there helping us paint dugouts one day, and Councilman G. is pretty familiar with it, too, from talking with him. But we wanted to present a short slideshow with pictures, and the more I thought about it, I thought, no, I'm not going to do that. You cannot get the emotions or the full, full impact from pictures. You need to be at the field to really see what's happening. Miracle League is a field and league for individuals with special needs and differing abilities. Starting the third year and have grown to nearly 100 players, and each player gets a buddy on the field that helps with safety and helps to teach the basic fundamentals of the game. We have seen some amazing challenges. We've seen some amazing changes, too, in our players, because we've had some that did not talk when they came to the field the first time, and now you can't get them to be quiet. We've got, we've got several of the players now that'll sing the National Anthem. They want to lead the National Anthem. We've got several that want to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Now, you're talking all levels of autism, all levels of downs, and various other disabilities and special needs. But their communication skills is with each other, with their families, and with our buddies is the amazing thing. From not talking to cheering for teammates or prompting the audience to cheer is a huge change. Our buddies have been, have been great and have seen many of the players become friends with the buddies. Some of our buddies are high school ballplayers, and they're coaches who come out weekly to participate as buddies. Coach Bob Arnold, varsity baseball coach from Aberdeen High School, one of our coaches and supporter of having his players come out and participate. Rob Sargent, sitting over here behind me on the left, is another example, someone that's been involved with sports most of his life. I think he told me he's been umpire for 30 years. County Parks and Rec.
I've been a volunteer for Parks and Rec for 30 years, and can, or like, for like 30 years.
Okay.
About five years currently serving as president of the county.
Okay. Someone been involved most of his life, and he is so committed to the Miracle League that I don't know what I'd do without him. Miracle League has made the special needs community more inclusive in the everyday community that we know as Hartford County. We had three players and their families represent Hartford County at the annual All-Star Weekend in Murfreesboro, Tennessee this past September. It was a life-changing experience for those families, as well as the two coaches mentioned earlier. This was the first opportunity for one of our players to ever fly on a plane. If you're from the Aberdeen area, you may have known him. Aubrey. We have a dream goal set for Hartford County and the Miracle League. And I know we would, we'll have to start with Parks and Rec, but just keep this in your mind. We would love to play host to an All-Star Weekend here in Hartford County for the national organization. We feel it would give Hartford County a chance to show what we have to offer to a national audience, and I think the economic impact would be huge for us. But for this to happen, we would need to have permanent restroom facilities built in the Shucks Road Sports Complex. And if there was a concession stand attached, that, you know, we consider that a bonus. With the sensory trail, five baseball fields, and a multipurpose field, plus our field, and an awesome walking path that a lot of people use, the restroom facility would be a welcome addition. I know our families and our players would welcome them. Shane is also one of our coaches that's helped out a lot, and I'd like to have him speak a couple words if he wants.
Sure. Thanks for having me. I get to take off my Director of Planning and Zoning hat and do something a little bit funner this evening. I became involved with the Miracle League through my own nonprofit called Coaches for the Community, and I was just on a whim. One of our coaches said, hey, come out to the Miracle League. I didn't know anything about it, and I've been involved ever since. And I think I'm going on year two now, maybe a year and a half, I think, I've been helping out. So it gives me a reason to get up on Saturday mornings, no matter how cold it is, and get out there and help these kids. And it's an emotional thing for me to talk about. So I'm glad I didn't have to do the presentation because I love it so much, and I just hope that you can, you all can come out and support the league on the 15th. It's a great thing to see, and please, if you can bring anybody else, if you can volunteer, we'd love to have you out there.
Our opening day will be April 15th this year. Our first game will start at 10 o'clock. We'll have the age 5 to 13-year-olds playing then, and then around 11:15, we'll have age 14 and up, and about 12:15, 12:30, another age 14 and up. We've had to break them into four teams because we had so many over 14 sign up that, you know, you get eight, nine ballplayers on the field at a time, and eight, nine buddies with them, it gets a little crowded. But we have some pretty good hitters, and for safety concerns, we felt that it was best to split them up into four teams, so that's what we've done. And we've had growth this year. We've had about 15 people sign up since January 1, which is just amazing. But I want to thank you for your time this evening. Thank you for any consideration you might give us to our dream, and we invite you out to the ball field to be a buddy. Any Saturday, you're free. Thank you.
Tom, I want to thank you for your presentation here tonight. I want to thank you and your team of volunteers for the commitment that you've made to the children there. The field is spectacular, but without you guys, it's nothing. And if you're going to put a concession stand in there, I highly recommend you bring those chocolate chip cookies.
We thought about it.
That would have been excellent. But yeah, I mean, I can't imagine that, that all council members wouldn't want to visit more than once, especially opening day. It is an amazing experience, and I look forward to it. Thank you for coming tonight, counsel. Anyone? Mr. Jan Giordano?
So, Tom, thanks, thanks a lot. I know you put a lot of hard work, a lot, it took a lot of years to, to get that off and going. You know, my, I had a very dear cousin of mine who, in New Jersey, who played bocce in Special Olympics, and I'm hoping that field that you guys have is so neat and way it's signed that maybe one day you guys can also multipurpose that. We did a Special Olympics up at the Equestrian Center for bocce this past year. We had people come from all over. You know, your area is so flat, and it doesn't matter that it's got to be, you know, cinder or something like that, they could play on that, and it might be something to consider multi-using that, that field for something like that. Those, those, those people absolutely loved it, but I'll be out, I got it in my, in my phone to be out there.
Thank you.
But just another idea, you know?
Appreciate it.
I know those, those kids really enjoyed that, too, and the young adults as well.
And we are opening it up to the Ark and Hartford Center every other Wednesday starting April 19th.
Maybe they'll do a bocce league.
We have them, we have a great time with them all, so.
So, Councilman G., your, 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 your,
Legislative Day 23-007, March 7, 2023. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes stand approved. Item number eight, introduction and consideration of resolutions. Resolution 002-23, happy to grace annexation, zoning waiver as amended. May I have a motion?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to move Resolution 002-23.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. It's been moved and seconded to move Resolution 002-23. Any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bullsodles?
Aye.
There being five votes in the affirmative, zero on a negative, one absent. Resolution 002-23 as amended is hereby approved. Resolution 017-23, authorization transit, MTA grant application. May I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve Resolution 017-23.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Penman. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 017-23. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bullsodles?
Aye.
There being five votes in the affirmative, zero on a negative, one absent. Resolution 017-23 is hereby approved. Mr. Janjordano, please read Resolution 021-23 and 022-23 under the record.
Resolution 021-23, Housing Administrative Plan, Veterans' Preference, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. A resolution approving an amendment to the Harford County Maryland Housing Agency's administrative plan to authorize the Harford County Housing Agency to amend its administrative plan and add a fourth super preference in section 2.1.4 to include four veterans or surviving spouses of veterans living in Harford County other than dishonorable discharge, and remove veterans or surviving spouses of veterans other than dishonorable discharge from 2.1.5 Category 1. No public hearing is required for this resolution.
Before you move further, tonight, we have Ms. Patricia Hammond and Mr. Greg Dwork with us this evening to speak to Resolutions 021-23.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Council President, members of the council, I just have a few quick words. My name is Patricia Hammond. I've been with the county almost 15 years. I am a grants administrator with Housing and Community Development. Housing and Community Development is the department that oversees public housing authority, also known as the Harford County Housing Agency. The Housing Agency administers the Housing Choice Voucher Program, more commonly known as Section 8, or HCV. The HCV program is dictated by federal regulations found at CFR 24 Part 9, 892, and the policies and procedures set for the Harford County Administrative Plan, which can be found on our website. Our direct website is www.harfordhousing.org. The HCV program is an income-based program that provides rental assistance to eligible households. Households interested in receiving rental assistance must first apply to our waitlist, which is currently closed and has more than 7,872 active households on that list. Harford County administers about 1,200 housing choice vouchers each month. As you can imagine, the wait time to receive rental assistance can be quite long. The administrative plan outlines how households will be selected from this waitlist. Our current administrative plan has five categories. The super preference are those applicants whose HOPWA assistance is expiring. HOPWA is a grant that serves people with HIV positive. Families who were displaced by government action or disaster, and disabled individuals ready to exit institutional care. Number two are families with children, working families, elderly families, disabled families, veterans or surviving spouses of veterans, and homeless. Number three are applicants who live and work in Harford County but do not fit Category 1 above. Number four is applicants who do not live in the county but have families with dependent children, and number five is all other applicants. The Housing Agency is introducing legislation this evening that would allow veterans or surviving spouses of veterans living in the county to be listed as under one of our super preferences. Right now, they're just basically in a large group. They would be moved up as a super preference. Harford County is committed to ending veteran homelessness. The Aberdeen Proving Ground is Harford County's largest employer, yet Harford County has individuals who have served their county living in substandard housing. Harford County and its citizens have a responsibility to ensure that our veterans live in safe, decent, and affordable housing. By providing veterans and surviving spouses a housing choice voucher, Harford County can make a difference in the lives of those who have served our country and who are currently struggling financially. I respectfully request that you adopt this legislative motion.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond. Mr. Dwork, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. And is it possible for you to forward those talking points to the council members?
Absolutely.
All right.
I'll email them in the morning.
All right. Thank you very much.
Questions, Al?
Council, any questions? I think it may have some after they get a chance to view it. All right. Thank you. Mr. Janjordano?
Resolution 022-23, 9/11 Fee Increased Telephone Bills, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. A resolution raising the charge applied to current telephone bills rendered for switched local exchange access service, commercial mobile radio service providers, or other 911 accessible service provider within Harford County from 75 cents to $1.50 per month. Introduced, read first time, order posted, and a public hearing scheduled for April 11, 2023, at 7:15 p.m. in these council chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. Agenda item number nine, introduction of bills. We have none. Ten, introduction and consideration of amendments. We have none. Eleven, call for final reading of bills. Bill 23-001, Fire Hydrant Petition Stack Store, 726 Bel Air Road. May I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve Bill 23-001.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved and seconded to approve Bill 23-001. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bullsodles?
Aye.
There being five votes in the affirmative, zero on a negative, one absent. Bill 23-001 is hereby approved. Bill 23-002, Fire Hydrant Petition, Rock Spring Road. May I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve Bill 23-002.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved and seconded to approve Bill 23-002. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bullsodles?
Aye.
There being five votes in the affirmative, zero on a negative, one absent. Bill 23-002 is hereby approved. Agenda item number 12, enrollment of bills. Bill 23-001, Fire Hydrant Petition Stack Store, 726 Bel Air Road, and Bill 23-002, Fire Hydrant Petition, Rock Spring Road, are certified as being text finally passed. Thirteen, unfinished business. We have none. Fourteen, new business. We have none. Seventeen, comments and input from attending citizens. Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
We do, Mr. President. I do need to call. No, okay. We have four this evening.
Call your first speaker. Three minutes.
Gregory Johnson, followed by Rick Grambo.
Okay. Good evening. Sir, name and address, please.
Gregory Johnson, Jessica's Court in Bel Air. Sorry, this mic was not aligned properly.
You okay?
Yeah. Good evening, council and citizens. I'm a resident of Council Manic District B, and I am calling tonight for my councilman, Aaron Penman, to recuse himself from all votes that involve his campaign manager, Joe Snee, in any capacity. This includes all developmental projects, cases, or zoning appeals in which Mr. Snee had, has, or will ever have involvement. For example, Perryman Peninsula, Eva Mar, and any other development project for which Mr. Snee serves as council in whole or in part. The inherent ethical conflicts of interest surrounding Mr. Penman deciding on legislation that has a direct impact on Mr. Snee's business, particularly when it comes at the expense of District B constituents' quality of life, is glaring, should be appalling to every Harford County citizen and cannot be overstated. Now, it is by no means a new revelation that Mr. Snee is intricately involved in Harford County politics. He has been for decades, dating all the way back to running Democratic County Executive Eileen Rairman's campaign in the mid-'90s. Mr. Snee has openly boasted many times about his influence over the levers of power in Harford County, to wit, the Aegis published a glowing article on October 15, 2010, entitled "How Joe Snee Gets Things Done," where he stated as much publicly. Quote, "He's never backed a losing candidate for county executive or circuit court judge, and he's got his fingers so close to the pulse of the political community, he can tell you who Harford County's next county executive will be." And he got it right with every administration between Rairmans and Glassmans. One of his former law partners said of their firm, quote, "We have local relationships and insights outsiders don't have and can't ever have." Mr. Snee added, "When we walk into the county government or circuit court, we're well-known. People know where we're coming from, and they know we know how to get things done. You can have the best legal theory, the best business plan, but the third leg to that stool is always business and politics. A lot of what we're doing here, we have to get through the development approval process. As Harford County grows, the demand for legal services will increase. We're going to add lawyers and legal assistants. As people move into Harford County, as government continues to regulate, there will be more need for legal services. We're going to add where needed." Quote, "And that means more business for Snee and his firm, which could keep him working for a long, long time," opined the author. He sees himself working another 15 to 20 years, growing the firm. Indeed. Mr. Penman, with the thousands of dollars that Mr. Snee and his cronies have donated to you, and with him having managed your campaign, how can your constituents and the residents of Harford County trust that you will represent us honestly? You have already made multiple statements publicly here in the council chambers since your inauguration that broadcast your loyalty to your developer comrades in their inner circle. It seems that you have quite the debt to pay off for being elected and are adamant about using the citizens of Harford County and our tax dollars to settle your deals. I, for one, think that's detestable. Again, Mr. Penman should recuse himself from any legislation or business involving Mr. Snee lest he appear compromised by the developers and their attorneys whose decisions directly impact our lives. We deserve consent of the governed representation, not a rubber stamp for Snee and the developers." Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Rick Grambo, 325 Chestnut Hill Road, Forest Hill, Maryland. Want to talk about business-friendly environments. I've had the pleasure of watching the former proceedings, which I won't talk about, but saw a lot of threats, intimidation, and crocodile tears regarding the destruction of Harford County's business-friendly environment. I didn't see any of those people standing up here, 2021, thereabouts, when we were talking about businesses being closed down, people saying, you're nonessential, you're essential, stay home. We talked about the Constitution, but no, now we're going to bring it up tonight about all this other stuff. So this is a really good time to remind you that that's what a business-friendly environment is. We don't close businesses down. They're going to do it again. Told you this before. I hate being the "I told you so" guy. They're going to bring it out and roll it out. You need to stand up and fight it this time. The other thing that's not business-friendly is corruption, and there is a cloud, an air of corruption, that hangs over Harford County. And all you have to do is dive into the campaign finance reports and the LLCs and the little shell corporations. This is an incestuous relationship. I've been looking at it all, and let me tell you something, that's not business-friendly at all. Because what good businesspeople, responsible businesspeople want is an environment which they can thrive, that doesn't pit, the government doesn't pick winners and losers, that they have an open policy, and that they do things properly. So this is the things we need to work on, guys. We need to make sure that we are business-friendly, not Harford County mafia business-friendly. Thank you.
Christina Trotta, followed by John Malamo.
Good evening, man. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Christina Trotta Makovic, 1126 Thebes Drive, Bel Air. Good evening. This is my first time addressing this new council, so I want to welcome everyone. However, I question how some of you were elected while running basement campaigns without explaining your issues or values to the community. Tonight, some of you have shown who you are working for, and it's not the people of this county. There is major voter fraud happening across this country, and Harford County is not exempt from these happenings. This has been revealed but not looked into by those who have the power to do so. I have my suspicions why. Which brings me to my next question. Why do the people in charge of our Board of Elections still have a position in this county? Laws were broken, admissions were made, but yet no one has been held accountable. The ignorance of the law is not an excuse, and those who admittedly did not handle the elections accordingly to the law should be terminated and have no dealings in our local elections. We have a team working diligently on a national and local level to uncover all truths, and the truth will come to light. Ms. Boyle-Sodles, you are my council representative, but yet one of the most important issues facing your constituents, the Eva Mar debacle, you were nowhere to be found during the community input meeting. And listening to you tonight, I know why. I don't know why you think sending a representative would suffice. When asked if anyone was there representing the council, your rep remained silent. This is unacceptable and should not be overlooked by your constituents. I hear a lot of talk about recusals and appreciate everyone speaking the truth and understanding the interworkings amongst our local officials. Mrs. Boyle-Sodles, having deep ties to Dixie Construction, real estate here in Harford County, land movement, and a business partner that is questionable for a sitting member of this council that makes decisions that could directly benefit you and your business partner, I am asking you, and for the support of the president of the council, to recuse yourself whenever there is a zoning appeals recommendation from Mr. Robert Cahoe Jr. In addition, any recommendations from the zoning appeals department, you shall also consider recusing yourself. Mr. Cahoe is the zoning hearing examiner for the zoning board of appeals, a direct report and influence to this council. The fact that you and Mr. Cahoe are business partners in Boyle and Cahoe Real Estate and will possibly make decisions that would directly benefit you should be a concern and red flag to all those in this county. This conversation can continue with real estate and deeds, businesses and LLCs, car deals, and joining each other's businesses. This is beyond a conflict of interest and a direct violation against the citizens of Harford County. This is said in accountability and transparency, and we demand accountability be formed from the elected officials. And lastly, what does your other business site services tend to gain from the destruction of Harford County? We will be watching.
Good evening, sir. Do you want me to state my name and?
Yes, sir.
Well, you usually say that before I do. Good evening. John P. Malamo, 2402 Eagleview Drive, Bel Air, Maryland. This is a final background session. There's a second runway, 1028, operating on the airport. Neither the airport layout plan nor operation exhibit show that runway. That runway was never presented to or approved by the zoning board of appeals. It is a runway designated for inclemented approach and landing paths in the FAA, RNAV, GPS plate. We note that appropriate airport accessory uses, such as restaurants, snack bars, automobile rental agencies, airline business offices, and service facilities, but not other businesses or industrial uses, may be permitted. Now, looking at legend item 18 of the 2020 airport layout plan, we note that there is a fuel farm on the airport in the Ag District, 4,000 gallons of gas, 5,000 gallons of jet A. This is a customary accessory use which could be permitted in any district unless otherwise restricted. By code, we note that petroleum and gas products sales or storage is permitted in B3, CI, and GI districts, and motor vehicle filling stations are permitted in CI, GI, VB, B1, B2, B3, MO, and VB districts, provided that all adjacent properties are on public water. There's no public water service at or around Harford County Airport, 3538 Aldino Road. A fair reading of the code indicates that petroleum sales and storage is not permitted at Harford County Airport. We also note that there is an unmanned aerial system, UAS, building, and a parachute jumping activities building. The UAS is in industrial use, and the parachute jumping activities is a business, an amusement. Parachutes land on the airport. The code and final decision are quite clear. No other business or industrial uses are permitted at a general aviation airport operating by special exception. Neither of these uses are permitted, and there's no variance for their use. Finally, we note by code that all commercial maintenance and servicing of aircraft shall take place entirely within an enclosed building. Fueling and defueling aircraft is a service. Councilwoman Boyle-Sodles, gentlemen, this is an overview of the zoning and zoning code at the Harford County Airport. We will next look at the land use practices that made this possible.